Going to call to order the committee of the whole meeting at five thirty-one. First up is the good of the order.
Councilmember Allen?
First, I was thinking some more about the role that we had discussed for last meeting. And we were talking about, you know, your partnership and speaking about the requirements we've had in town for. And I think it might be in there that we will only fund up to fifty percent of the something. Not sure if it's in there, but I think we had it in there before. And I was thinking that could be a nice balance of the, you know, if the venue or sponsorship would cover fifty percent, let's say you can cover fifty percent. It's just a really nice way of defining a partnership. A hundred percent for a year kind of as a trial with the expectation that it needs to be reported. You know, other sources of funds to do for it. So anyway, I just wanted to ask kind of, you know, what other council members thought about that? And just provide that feedback to administration.
Uh, to the administrative staff. The music call is going to be in the city administrator report. We got, um, so the end of the city administrator report will be a re kind of conceiving of the Port of Seattle grant. And the music crawl is in there, so I can certainly respond now or we can review the report to see what the Port of Seattle said about the music crawl. But.
Okay, if that makes more sense.
Yeah, as well as all state council on the conversations I've had. Both to the music crawl and the board.
Okay, great.
And we'll have a couple more council members, but that can't be good for you.
So I was thinking more about the ADUs than I was thinking that maybe we would have a conversation tonight. But it looks like the ADU discussion is only in public hearing, which typically we don't talk about it when it's just been until the hearing. And so I was thinking, um, I did hear what the expectation was, um, for me to have. Because I sent the questions last time, you know, they weren't, um, it wasn't expected to happen for the last meeting, but I kind of was thinking I would have answers.
Um, so we're not prepared to answer questions on ADUs tonight because we don't want to get ahead of planning commission. Who are making their decision and recommendation to council next week. So we're letting the planning commission make sure that they can include their work. And then we'll bring a full speak of information, answers to questions to the June third.
Okay, and then we would have, we wouldn't be expected to adopt that night. We still have one more meeting following. All right, okay, perfect. Thank you. Cause I believe council member Schaefer had input as well. So. Thanks.
Anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Um, so next up, review of regular meeting agenda. Usually where we look mostly at the consent agenda or see if we have anything we'd like to instantly poll or any questions. I think they have a consent agenda. All right. So with that, then we'll move on to our first discussion item, which is presentation on drought forecast conditions on emergency process. Um, with our fire chief Ben Lane. You're welcome to take it if you'd like. They're right here. Yeah.
Good evening, council, city staff. Nice to talk to you all. Thanks for the invitation to come here tonight. Uh, city administrator, I just asked you to just kind of give you an update on Eastside Fire's current assessment around. Drop for gaps and fire weather. And this is really specific to, um, the action that council for the last year around. A permanent ban on fireworks doesn't go into effect until, uh, it's actually July, September, seventh or the first. But you all have taken additional steps to broaden the parameters around the fire chief's discretion on. Um, implementing emergency proclamation, given what the fire protection may be. So a couple of things. I just want you to know that we do this in coordination with King County, the President of the Districts, and then. Eastside Fire and Rescue, our team consists of, we have personnel from our operations division, our fire marshal's office, and then our emergency management. And they evaluate this ongoing. One, I'm definitely not a meteorologist, so being in a position this far out to try to forecast something, just take that with the grain of salt. I am retiring at the end of the year, so maybe I'll do it at that point in six, but I haven't made my decision yet. Snowpack levels were significantly lower, uh, this year than in years past. I believe I read it's roughly around the sixty-nine percentile. So the impact there specifically to, uh, the watershed and Duval currently, you receive your water from Seattle Public Utilities, which is a water reservoir. Why would that be a factor for us in evaluating it? Um, had experience with another contract agency where the city of Marshall Island, they ran into deficiencies. We could find ourselves in a situation where, um, the particular public utility might be, um, asking personnel to ration water. Uh, I'm not saying that that's on the forecast, but that was something that we would also be evaluating, um, given, uh, potential critical decision around. Um, making an emergency for accommodation to ban fireworks. So there is that. And then as of May of this year, Western Washington is classified under, uh, moderate to severe drought conditions according to the U.S. Drought Monitor. And confirmed by the Washington Department of Natural Resources. So one, just to forecast that where we're at today. And we're already in a, a drought condition. So that's something that has us concerned. Uh, what that means is that the fine fuels such as crashes, brushes are drying out earlier than usual. Ironically, uh, reported indicates that we had a, a warm spell earlier on. It doesn't feel like we've had that, especially with the weather recently. Uh, but it does not take much for those, those light flashy fuels to dry out. For us, that's a concern. There's a couple of things that can have to do with, um, increased fire start, um, potential. And then we also look at if a fire does start, what are the potentials for that to, uh, progress and grow rapidly? Um, you've all heard the term, uh, red flag warning, uh, that gets pushed out on the news. We take that very seriously. So we see something along those lines or that is, um, being forecasted. We do things operationally. We, um, work to increase staffing or we preposition apparatus. Historically, Eastside Fire has upstapped a brush truck or two to, uh, patrol our area. So that we did have a fire start, we can get, um, resources on that quickly. One thing that we are not a hundred percent certain of this year is that, um, we do have a strong partnership with American Natural Resources, which is a state. I think I read in the mayor's.
Happy to discuss that.
Department of Natural Resources, which is a state resource and, um, you know, we have confidence that staffing levels that they have had historically will be able to rely on those. Now, um, U.S. Forest Service is another story. Um, that's a federal entity. Um, we've all certainly seen some of the cuts that are taking place. So there, that directly impacts staffing level. Uh, for us, that doesn't necessarily, uh, impact us on an immediate response. But if we're going to have something ongoing, we would definitely want to factor that into, um, resource availability. A couple of things that go into what a, uh, red flag warning would constitute. So critical, uh, relative humidity thresholds. Typically below the twenty percentile range. Um, they monitor. Fuel, moisture, wind, and obviously temperature and atmospheric stability. So we don't just look at, uh, temperature over a particular period of time. Wind is a big factor. Certainly where Duval is positioned up against the cascades, you are definitely in the Wild Mountain Urban Interface area, which is also known as the WUI. Um, that just means there's a higher risk if a fire does start. Uh, there's ample fuel for that to spread. Uh, we, we certainly take that very seriously. Last year, in the amendment to the Duval Municipal Code, I believe it's section five point one zero point zero five six. Um, specific to the fire chief recommendation to prohibit the discharge of fireworks. It defines extreme fire danger as a period of hot, dry weather, probably by low fuel moisture during this period while wildfires can be expected. And fire growth accelerated. I also recognize, um, and have been involved in previous decisions at other cities that, um, have. Authorized the use of consumer fireworks inside of their jurisdiction. That it's not an easy decision to one say, we're going to overnight make a decision to ban, ban the use of, uh, consumer fireworks. Um, I don't take that lightly. I also recognize that the ability to do that and then expect that information to get pushed out through the community in short notice is really not realistic. Um, which is why the city administrators asked me just to come speak to you today, um, U.S. Representatives of the community. So just for your awareness, what we are seeing, um, we're in a drought scenario. Uh, snowpack is a factor which could also relate to water supply. And we'll have to monitor that ongoing. The nice thing is that it doesn't clearly, there's not some clear per, specific parameter that says. It has to be this hot for this long for, with the relative humidity at this particular point. Um, that gives. Myself as the fire chief, the discretion to make a recommendation to the mayor around, um, implementing an emergency ban. I don't do that in a, a silo. You have a team. It's not just Eastside Fire and Rescue. Uh, we collaborate with all the stakeholders that I've shared early, earlier. So. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and if you have concerns, I'm happy to, to hear those. I can, uh, commit to U.S. Council and to the city administrator that this won't be the only time we have communications on this. Uh, we understand that if we were to make this decision, we want to make it in a manner that, well, in public safety is our top priority. And then it places the city in a position to do the ample appropriate messaging. Eastside Fire and Rescue, regardless of whatever the, the, the weather forecast is. Um, as we get closer to the Fourth of July, we will be doing some public messaging around the safe use of consumer fireworks. Um, just overall general safety, uh, and to get people to start thinking about, uh, fire hazards. Uh, I think with that, that was my brief briefing on fire weather. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Council, have any questions?
From, from the city level, is there anything, I mean, urban analogies to one and, and are there other things that we as a city should be contemplating or considering? For sake of emergency preparedness or, or disaster preparedness related into fires, wildfires?
Uh, well, wildfires in general, um, you know, that this is certainly a, a growing concerning topic and, and rightly so in Western Washington. Um, so things around from an emergency plan, it's encouraging folks to be familiar with defensible space. They can easily go to our website. If you can connect them to me, we can steer them to the, uh, right contacts. The King County Conservation District, they come out and provide free wildfire home assessments. So they'll come out to your house, um, they'll walk through saying, um, you know, you could address this, this, and this. And in many cases, last year was an example where there was a grant that funded people to, um, if they were making any sort of landscape changes. They can get some of those landscape, landscape changes funded through this grant. So moving away from maybe using bark near their home to pea gravel or something like that, that's not the bustable. So I always say steering community members, regardless of the topic of fireworks, to, um, educating themselves on, uh, creating a defensible space. And that also goes beyond just a single homeowner in many cases. You know, what I do as a, as a homeowner certainly impacts my neighbors. And so you want to be good stewards of that. I don't want to create a, a fire risk for my neighbors. And likewise, so that's where we, in a lot of cases, will come out, um, and have conversations with HOAs or share that information. Um, there's the firewise community where communities can work together to become firewise, uh, certified. There are, um, the potential of, um, insurance rating reductions if a, a community receives that, uh, firewise certification.
Great. Other questions? Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I, you mentioned that that's no pack lower at the sixty-nine percent. No, I think you need to hold understanding. So when I think of sixty-nine percentile, I think fifty percent that would be average, and so that would be higher than average. But I think that, uh, did you want to answer?
No, yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought it was in your head. Um, so anyway, I was just curious, um, what, what would be average if we're at the sixty-nine percentile?
So I think in the, in the literature that I reviewed today is that looking at the range from, I think it was, uh, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one on the, the dates exact. And looking at historical average in comparison to that, we're sixty-nine percent of what we, um, had during that timeframe. So the translation is, um, well, we've had this, this warmer, although it hasn't felt like it. There's been earlier snowpack melt, so the snowpack is lower. Um, that itself translates to the watershed. Um, and for us, and where the city receives our water, I'm just saying that there could be a potential where Seattle Public Utilities say. We need to enter into some sort of a water, um, restriction conservation usage, which would be something for us to consider around. Okay, if we have a large incident, are we going to be in a position where we have access to all the water that we're going to be able to, to use? Um, and it could be one factor into making a decision along with all those other, uh, factors that I talked about, whether it's, uh, red. Uh, red flag forecast, uh, long range dry spell, keep low humidity for extended period of time.
Okay. Other council members have questions? Uh, council member Supple?
What was the organization that comes up to your house?
King County Conservation District.
I, oh, I was gonna. Sorry, I forgot to even look at that. Did one of our directors, oh, directed.
Just handing some of the question back, so we refer to no pack information from SPU. Is the accumulation across the site, SPU monitors to be seven inches, which is, sorry. That's meant to be about seven inches, which is below the long-term average for this time of year. So that's a significant percentile, but they're average. So it's below their average for this time of year.
Um, I'll go ahead and go, um, and I, for my background in science, and I would happily turn out over this with you for hours because this is so fascinating to me. There is so many different factors and it's different every year. It's never the same. And I'm really interested in those longer term factors, like you mentioned, things we know now, which aren't going to improve, which are, you know, the snow melt and all that. Um, but then also wind. Uh, how far out do certain things, um? Do you, do you look at factors like wind? I mean, you can't really predict those too far out and generally you might see some trends. But do you, I, does it come down more to some of those shorter term factors that we won't know until like, or support?
Yeah, so our, um, Wildland team members, they have a, and that's not just Eastside Fire, this is a region wide. And they do have meteorologists that work with DNR, um, so state resources around. Fire modeling for the entire state. So they have a, a weekly meeting. And in that, one of the things that, that they look to forecast is projected fire growth. So if a fire starts, how rapid would it spread? And this, this, that in essence is the challenge around trying to balance giving. The community members who are planning to have this, you know, celebration with fireworks, time to understand that. They're, they're going to need to make a pivot and for us to make, um, a strong, solid as possible decision around that. So if we get out too far, you know how quickly weather can change here. So I think it's, it does one factor. Um, you know, certainly if we had a stretch of weather where we had eight degrees for five to seven days in a row, given that we're already in a drought condition. And if you have any sort of wind projection, that would be a, that would add to our concern. We would also take, um, operational procedures to likely increase staffing to, to address that. So I wish, I wish I was in a position to say, if these benchmarks are met fourteen or twenty-one days in advance. We're very confident in making the decision to make a recommendation to ban the use of consumer fireworks. And that's just not the case. So I really feel like it's probably going to be, um, I hope that we're in a fourteen day range. I mean, last year, we had, we reported a little bit different walk into the Fourth of July. There's a lot of confidence. The year prior was a much different story. And one of the big differences in the year prior is that, um, there was a gap in communication between fire department. And the city. So if nothing else, you know, we are committed that will not happen. And so if we're even thinking about it, we'll be having discussions early on.
Thank you. And I remember too that some of the factors are, that are intuitive. So for the public to understand, just when we're having, if we were having a rainy spring, that's not totally a good thing. It creates more fuel that's going to die by the time, um, that happens. So.
Yeah, those are the flashy fuels. So there's a, you know, you pull weed today, it's back tomorrow. Well, we have this, all that stuff dries out. That's the flashy fuels that easily ignite. If you have any sort of wind, okay, then that progresses into some of these longer one and, one, one or ten hour fuels. Which then you can sustain a, a lot of that.
Yeah. And then the last thing I just wanted to add, uh, the Conservation District is an amazing group. Um, and it's really important. I served on their committee for a few years and they are non-regulatory. So if people hesitate about having people from the government come onto their property, they are not out there saying, oh, you cut down one more tree than usual. Or something like that. They're not there to check regulations. So just so people feel more comfortable. Really big to them to build that trust in the community that they're not going to come out and be like, you know, you shouldn't have that evergreen down. Um, they're just there to help make things safer for fire and a lot of other purposes. Um, oh, Mayor, and then I, Councilmember Allen?
I just wanted to say thank you, Chief Lane, for coming tonight as well as really highlighting why it's important. Um, and for us to have a primary fire span coming into effect next year. Um, and again, thank the council for being supportive of that. Um, it saves resources and will definitely protect our community in the long run. So thank you.
All right, Councilmember Allen? Yeah, I was just wondering if, um, that they can potentially share that fire, that, and service by King Conservation District. Through, you know, maybe social media or our, um, mutual research.
Yes, I was taking notes. And so just making, in fact, it says social media. So, yes.
Any last questions for Chief? Oh, all right. Well, thank you so much for sharing all those.
Great to see everybody.
Well, next up, we have review of school district state of the district with Dr. Susan, which are superintendent. And I would offer the same to you if you'd like to stand at the podium or sit at the table. You're mine. I'm welcome to. Oh, it'll be, yeah.
So thank you all. Hard to believe that I'm finishing my third year here. It seems like it's just bone by. Um, much of what I will be presenting to you tonight is based on. My first year of getting a lot of listening and learning and being new to the community and just assessing was bringing my experience. From very large systems to our, well, the smaller community. And trying to introduce some systemness and, and put some things in place to address some things that I thought, um, would. Really make our district stronger. Um, when we look at our data right now, our district is kind of middle of the pack in the state for our performance. And I just, to me, that just seems ridiculously low. We are an incredible, well-resourced, educated community. Our kids should be up here, not in the middle of the pack. So a lot of what I'll talk about is my efforts toward reaching that goal. So I'll just quickly, I'm, I want to just kind of hit on some highlights. This is not exhaustive. And please, if you have questions about any other aspect of the district, anything's fair game. I'll tell you anything I know. But I thought in a relatively reasonable amount of time, we can hit some highlights for. The R two in terms of race, race and ethnicity, really work on the, on the side. Uh, around how many percent of our students are Hispanic and then the other, um, the other areas go down from there. Right now, we are sitting just below twenty-nine hundred students. And after I think today, we're at two thousand eight hundred and ninety-one students in the district. That is significantly lower than what we can, and so I'll talk a little bit about that, how that's been affecting our communities. Programmatically, we have about seven percent of our students are English language learners. Believe it or not, we have forty languages that are spoken in the school district. I'm not sure that I can even name them. But our students are speaking forty different languages. So just over twenty percent of our students come from houses that, um, we would characterize as low income or they're receiving food. Are highly capable. Students represent about two-four percent, just over four percent of our population of students. And then our students with disabilities are, um, being eleven and twelve percent of our population. So I want to talk about some of the things that we've been focusing on over the last couple of years. Um, that I think were really necessary in the district. When I got here, um, what I found was a district that was. Seven schools, all operating kind of independently. And they're just, they're active system. So each school had their own forms, their own procedures, their way of doing things. And so if you have a student at two different schools, you would have two completely different experiences. So what we tried to do was interview some systemness while still allowing for each of the schools to maintain their individual identities. You know, we don't need to be so, so stringent about that you don't recognize what each individual community's characteristics are. So one of the things that we have really focused on is professional learning communities, which is a research-based practice of four teachers. And we spend the first year training our administrators because there's nothing worse in a school district than having one administrator say, oh, we should do professional learning communities. And nobody else really knows or understands what it is. So if I'm supervising a principal and I don't really know or appreciate what that is, we're not really going to hold them accountable to doing this. So anything that we're rolling out, every administrator has to know and understand and be able to walk into a classroom and say, this is, this is being done right? Or this isn't, we've done. The other thing though, that I found when I got here was just a lack of data literacy from administrators to teachers. And, and I'm making a lot of generalizations. So please, we have some pretty fantastic people that have expertise on a lot of different areas. But in general, as a system, administrators didn't have good graph on our student data and our performance data and what to do. You know, teachers didn't have a good graph of what their students' data was. And they didn't have real time data, like day to day for quarter to quarter. What are our students struggling with and how do I intervene, make that better? When, what they had was an end of year assessment called MAPS that gave them a per, your child a percentile rank. That tells you how they're performing against kids around the country. Not really helpful to a teacher who's trying to design instruction in the new kids. So we brought in the IREDA assessment. It has students, um, three times a year. So it has at the very beginning of the year. On all the skills that they're supposed to know for that year. So a teacher can look at that and say, oh, my kids already know this, this, and this skill. I don't need to waste time on that. I can jump right into this. These kids really struggle with this skill. I know I'm going to need to give them extra support. We've rarely seen the paying dividends and our teachers are reporting it has completely changed the way they're teaching. Because they have real data that's skill by skill and they can intervene right away if their student. Content integration is, uh, work that started before I got here, but we've continued that work. And essentially that's integrating with different content areas. So while you're learning science, you're integrating reading and writing and giving kids authentic. Experiences and tasks that help learning DICK for them and make it more fun and interesting. And then we've really focused on instructional leadership. So trying to move our principals from being building managers. And just making sure that everything's running every day to really understanding instruction and knowing when they walk into a classroom, if instruction is happening. And how to coach teachers on becoming better instructionally. So I want to share just some celebrations based on, it's taken three years. We're starting to see some payback from that work. So if you can flip over to the next, the next slide. So we've seen our grad rate at Cedar Crest has gone up. Once you start getting into the nineties, making incremental moves and that grad rate. Is challenging. We saw about two point four percent. This is honestly, and we just went back to our own country, the highest four-year graduation rate. Um, I've seen, um, our English, I'll just, I want to show you a couple of other, um, subgroups out of this data. Because I think that's what tells the story about how we're moving students is these subgroup learners are all also moving. So our English language learners, that grad rate went up six percent last year. Our students with disabilities grad rate went up four point two percent. You can look at, and our, um, low income learners have four point seven increase and then our Spanish. You can look at, and our, um, low-income learners had four-point-seven increase and then our Hispanic students grew to two. Increase. So, all of those subgroups of students at the high school are moving and making progress. This is our SAT data. If you look at the top, the top row, Cedar Crest. Um, that middle column is the evidence-based reading and writing. And then on the right is MAP. Look, the second column is both. Cedar Crest, just, you can just see the data compared to what. Testers are on low. Perform at, what the average United States is fifty-six percent. United States MAP benchmark, twenty-nine percent. Our kids are at six-and-five. Also, they're exceeding pretty significantly, doubling in terms of math, the state of, um, Washington rate, thirty-one percent. And then for reading and writing, about sixty-two percent in the state of Washington, and about ninety-one percent. Some really great results from our district Cedar Crest on the SAT. This is Hope Middle School. One of the things that I like to tell people, when we say anywhere between. Seventy-five and eighty, eighty-five percent of our students are at grade level expectations or above. That tells us we have a solid core curriculum that's being delivered effectively. You'll start seeing in some of these next slides where that's happening. So, Pope's doing great. They're also working. The celebrations in my mind are at our elementaries on the next couple of slides. Ninety-two percent of kindergartners as of a couple of weeks ago when they were tested are at or above grade level in reading. With still four weeks of instruction to go. That's incredible. Um, Stillwater, again, seventy-five percent of them at or above grade level in that. We can go on, if I go Cherry Valley and Stillwater, we're not even pre-ification, was our, like, testing, so I don't have their data. But I wanted to share what we do have. So, Cherry Valley, eight or two, eighty-two percent of kindergartners at or above in reading. Kindergartners at or above in now. And. You get the idea. They're doing well, solid core curriculum. Teachers are delivering instruction effectively. And administrators in those buildings are looking directly, local teachers looking at that data. And talking about their instructional practices. I'll switch gears quickly to overall financial health. That's been a huge, huge topic, I'm sure, for you as well. We, um, oh, this is actually a really big celebration for us. So, we were recently awarded with the State of Washington Auditor Stewardship Award. They've been giving this award for about ten years. Um, in that ten years, any. Any state agency, municipality, city, government agencies, state agencies, school districts. Can receive this award for fiscal stewardship, transparency, founding practices. And in that ten years, there are only a handful of school districts that have received the award and we received this award this year. We're really honored by that, um, honored to be recognized. Seventy-five percent of our, uh, sixty-two million. State of Washington. Um, one of the things people ask me a lot is if I'm worried about things that are happening at the federal level. Yes, and about two to three percent of our budget comes from federal. Really because we're a more affluent community. If we were a more urban, uh, higher, um. Free and reduced lunch numbers, you would start to see that number grow more, less impacted. Not that we get opportunities to, three percent of our budget, any day of the week. But it's less impactful for us than it is for others. And then the remainder of that revenue is coming from local sources. And this is just another way that we divide up the pie. Um, our people account for over eighty-five percent of our. We've been running out of pulses to cut. What we're seeing right now. There are several reasons for that. Um, no burger. During the pandemic and they did, you know, they're happy where they are and so they're not coming back. Um, and so that, all of those things of reduced numbers. But also, as I'm sure you, let's be honest, state funding. Our costs are increasing, the funding is not increasing. And so, that this year has added up to about a four-and-a-half million dollar shortfall for us. Um, we are making about three million cuts and these are rough numbers. But we're, we're targeting about three million in cuts and then we'll be asking our board to be sort of, no one's sending a percent issue. And also to that last year, um, as you know, there's only so long. So, um, we are, we're getting to that. But we're also at that point where we're, we're starting to learn. We will update on some things that we have that, that have, we've run some energy-efficient lighting upgrades at Stillwater. Transportation Department. This summer, we have a couple of big projects, a big, big face left side. Stillwater, they'll be getting exterior upgrades and paint job. Completely change the look of Stillwater Elementary. And we'll also be doing exterior paint incarnation. Those schools have been having a lot of fun looking at different. Um, color palettes and choosing the color palettes that they wanted their schools. Those decisions have been made. So, those projects will be starting over the summer. We did apply for and receive a pre, a freeze prevention grant. If you know anything about Cherry Valley, uh, it's got those pipes that are exposed and every year they freeze and burst. And we have a mess on our hands. And so, we did get that freeze prevention grant that allowed them to do some insulation and hopefully. Issues at Cherry Valley. And then we're doing a, a small, just a partial grouping project at the middle. We are in the middle of a bond planning committee right now. One of the things, uh, that we started last year. Was a capital assets advisory. We asked people from the community that have expertise in this area. You're a business owner, you work in, in a related field, to, uh, part of an advisory. There were no district staff on the advisory yet. But they did a deep dive into our facilities and made recommendations to the board about. What they thought next steps would be and their recommendation was that they, they, uh, we needed to run a bond and that the middle school needed to. Lots of reasons for that. I will say two. Just completely, two of the major reasons are, the school is in terrible disrepair. And if we start to, if we start doing and fix things, we have to bring everything up to code. And fiscally, it doesn't, it's been, um, such an aging and deteriorating thing. The other thing is that that building is a California model building. So, it just, the, the, the amount of words in that building. Um, in the age where we have the security concerns that we do, when that building was built, we didn't have those concerns. But the world has changed a lot. And so, the number of points of entry. For someone with nefarious intentions who wanted to get on that campus and get into a classroom. Make that untenable, um, safety. So, those were the two, the biggest reasons that they made that recommendation. Because of that. A couple of the people from that capital assets advisory, some of the. Which was one of the recommendations of the. So, as you see in some of these pictures, this was a day that the, um, bond committee did a deep dive. They went, we spent a Saturday going through every facility. With some of our maintenance, the maintenance force, just kind of pointing out where the issues were. They, what needed to be addressed at each of the schools so that as they're making recommendations to the board. They have a solid understanding. They've also received lots of education in. Bonded equity processes and a lot of, um, of finance and what that financing works like. And so, they're getting a lot of education and now they're at the point where they're starting to look at potential projects. That they want to recommend to the board. Ultimately, it will be up to the board to decide if that's the recommendation. Current things we're doing in terms of community outreach. We've revitalized our partnership with Empower Youth Network. They also sit on their board. So, that has allowed me to really get a good understanding of their programs. They exist to serve our students and the students of this, without the school district. And so, I think we're really fortunate to have them in our community. We also, based on feedback that I heard when I arrived in this wood. We started the Riverview Rock and Rally program, which is an open gym program that any student in the community, they don't have to be a visiting student. They live in the community, they love the community. And they have supervised play access at school, middle school. We have a rock climbing wall. We have. Games they can pick up on and we have adult volunteers, adult, you know, wool running. Fingerprinting, background, shared training, CPR training. We, we give them a whole gamut of everything. Um, and they're, they're supervised students, um, welcome to come and join. Last week, we, we kind of got off to, but it was a slow start. Kids weren't really sure what it was and if they wanted to be there. Last week, we had thirty kids and twenty level books that showed up. So, our hope is to expand that. We would like to have a, um, site and evolve. Is, is, is moved here to home and, um, we're working the bugs out now with hopes to expand that. One of the things that we've done is really try to rethink communication. So, we've, we have legal. We have now implemented five weekly newsletters. So, every other week, a community newsletter goes out. And then on the odd week in the end, our local. Happen every other week. Another thing that we've done. This has actually been all three years that I've been here is I have. So, anyone in the community, I have students, I have teachers, I've had people that really don't have a connection to the district. They can go on the website and use. Uh, in that twenty minutes, I can usually, that's whether it's just, it is a brief conversation or we need that one. Since that's the case, I'll just block, I'll see time after that. So, we have extra, so I don't have to cut the block. Uh, but I learned a lot. I learned a lot about the district. I learned a lot about what people are frustrated with or like, we need it. And it's one of the best things that I do. Um, one of the other best things I do, I'm just trying to tell you something about on here. What is the, I have a student advisory, superintendent student advisory. So, we have about thirty-five students from sixth to twelfth grade. That meet four times a week to talk about issues in the school district. We usually start out at the person, maybe what's going well, or the challenges, what do you have? What do you hope for the workbook? You want to do this, this, this year? And so, we just wrapped up our fourth meeting for the year. One of the pieces of feedback that students offered was that they wanted to meet more frequently. So, next year, we're gonna try to meet monthly because they feel like they wanna keep the momentum going. So, we're gonna meet every month next year. Uh, they'll also present to our board next month about the things that they work on. Being gap curious, so we bring the services and supervisors and, 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 and about what they want. And then he goes about, makes changes. Um, principals come in if they're frustrated with something in school. Whatever the issue is, we try to have an expert or the decision-maker in the district that will come in and listen and then take action. So that they can see that their voice matters. So. I talked about capital assets advisory. Uh, one of the ones we, we started, uh, last year was the financial advisory. And again, this was another, just based. There's not a lot of students, you see, and then they really feel like they know what's going on. And so, uh, we opened up this advisory again to people in the community, not to our employees. And to be able to just open everything up. And we, we share concerns. We talk about maybe like our budget cuts, what we're thinking about doing. We ask for advice. We ask for feedback. Um, we plan on expanding that a little bit next year. And probably opening it up to some employees because we're, we're just, just getting some feedback that they're feeling. The reason that we structured these this way originally because of feedback that I got in my home. Which was, you guys love up these communities with a bunch of district, district staff. And then they just vote whatever, they just make it go the way you guys wanted to go. And so, we wanted to be really intentional, considering we're not having any district staff, just come in, here's everything, help what you think. So, those have both been wonderful, gotten great feedback and those will continue. So, challenges. And since I, um, I thought we created this year, we've been using legislative, uh, in a book. So, just try our best of time, but end up highlighting how. These funding gaps have really hurt us. And so, we, we, what we've called the big three. Anyone related to education and we've identified the, the areas which were specialized information. And then I'm saw. Because those were the big three areas where our costs are so far outpaced by what we're getting in funding. That we felt like those three things needed to be addressed. So, you can see just the gaps in what we're spending versus what we're getting. And every time we see those gaps, we're kind of dipping into our savings to make up the difference. And it's really. And so, I just wanted to show you that. Obviously, we didn't get a whole lot this year. Not anyone to get what we thought, thought was coming, um. Uh, uh, most of the money that came from education was previously promised money. And then a couple of other challenges we're dealing with this year. We had managed to escape the, the bus driver shortage, route cancellation issue. Up until about a month or two ago. Uh, and then it became really untenable. And. We watched other districts navigating this over the past couple of years, only saying, we're so lucky. We haven't had to do this. We've never had to cancel route and now we're canceled ones. And so, we've been looking at, um. A lot of different avenues. We're, we're recruiting, we're training people. What often happens is we get them trained and then they go on something that pays more than what we're. So, it's kind of like this vicious cycle. We do have some amazing drivers that have been in this for a long time. Uh, we're also looking at some contract companies, uh, to like Durver and First Data Transportation. To see if they can just help us out with, um, drivers, uh, helping us out and we won't have. So, that's, that's something in progress that I'm sure you're seeing. And then the other thing that we dealt with this year. Uh, successfully resolved was the boundary petition. So, we agreed up, um, a neighborhood on the other side of the valley. That was, uh, requesting to move into the Lake Washington School District. Uh, from our perspective, there were about four families that were already waved into Lake Washington that wanted this. We had about twenty-five kids that were coming to River View and their parents were saying, but we bought our house here because it was in River View. How can they make us move? And so, clearly, we don't want to lose them either. Um, we did. go through an entire hearing with the regional committee a few weeks ago. Last week, they ruled in our favor. Um, it's a seventy year bill. We got word today that we mentioned it, but does not have any interest in appearing. We saw the shooting. Some opportunities. One of the things that we're for quickly coming to terms with is that if our revenue from our traditional funding sources is not going to be there, we need to start generating our own revenue. And one of the ways that we're planning to do that this year is through opening a virtual academy. That virtual academy is not for Riverview students. It is to serve any student that lays their head down in the city of we will approve the student. But this is something that many families and they want us to have the reasons they want the flexibility of a virtual environment. And so we put a curve on that movement. And it is, it does give us an opportunity to generate revenue for the for the district. And so you'll, you may or may not see that. We're really trying to not advertise that locally because we're not trying to attract our students to it, but that is happening. Um, also our alternative learning programs that are learning center really cool. And so we've seen this interesting shift with a declining enrollment and the homeschool program. But a really booming enrollment in fully colored code programs. So code program students historically have not been successful. I already love working with a comprehensive high school, but they need a small environment or they need more individual attention. Those programs are really busy right now and getting attention from other districts who don't have those programs and want to send students. So our biggest barrier there is we just is capacity and we love that when the schools really continue to do that. We are all always also expanding our college and the high school program. Our goal is by next year, through a child to be able to start at ninth grade with college credit earnings and be able to have a bachelor or associate's degree by the time you graduate without ever having landed the campus. So that leaving the campus to go to Bellview or Cascadia is a barrier for some students. It's and it's not even by income. It's just, it's hard to get a kid there. Um, if all parents are looking, if there's not, they don't have our transportation. And so we would love to keep our kids in the school. We would love them to have a school experience at Cedar Craft to be able to enjoy all of the things that this does offer and still be able to earn credit. So this year, there are eleven, thirty twenty five, twenty six school year, there will be eleven college and high school courses. And the law will maybe we'll be able to do beginning of ninth grade through a series of courses that will result in a I think that one. Thank you. Anything I thought that don't make sense.
Want to start with me? I don't have any questions, but I want, just want to say a big congratulations to get that state honors award. I know that we had a couple of measures fail, unfortunately. Um, there was a lot of misinformation floating around in the community that um, obviously impacted um, the outcome significantly. And by that word, I'm really excited uh, for you all. Um, it is rare. We we've had clean audits um, for many, many years here, but that's a very difficult part to achieve at the state honor. Um, and to get a reward like that is absolutely incredible. And it gets the volumes to the financial stewardship of the district and of the individual teachers uh, and everybody that contributes to the system. Um, and also huge kudos to the graduation rates because that is not uh, what we might be in the middle of the path for the state. Uh, that's still extraordinarily impressive considering um, how small our district is too. So.
Yeah, it's it's an incredible, incredible district. The families like it's it's unlike any place that I have started at.
Any question for Dr. Leach? Um, cast member circle?
Yeah, I'm a substitute teacher in the River View School District as well as uh, the Washington School District. And one thing I noticed is that um, we're gifted kids. Like Washington has a program called Quest. Are you familiar with that?
Not familiar with the Quest.
Well, anyway, somehow they identify gift to students and then when they get into middle school, they're placed in English, this, all the kids are, same kids are placed in the same English class, science, math, and then go through middle school and the together. I don't see anything like that anyhow.
We don't have that. And I'm probably one of the reasons with just the difference in numbers. So they have such a much bigger pool to support that than we do. We have a path program. Are you sure? And we do have students that can move. It's possible to do a lot of that. And we do agree with that. I think it's great to have that kind of um cluster model where they're moving through their course. And I will say that one of the criticisms that we have received and are working on is the lack of the gap level. And so we've been, that's one of the reasons that I think the professional learning community is so important. So that is because the teachers can look at their data and be able to enter the also trying to do something called curriculum compacting. Where where the goal is to have all eighth graders at whole middle school be able to finish. You know, I come after you, it doesn't have a great curriculum. So we have some things that we're working on. They feel like we have some real foundational elements that we're missing. And we've been trying really hard to get all of those things in place. And now that that's moving forward, we can start focusing on some of those more specific. But that is, it's a great, a great model.
Questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the Rock and Rally program. It's something that I've been hoping for for over a decade. And um, I'm a train volunteer and I attended one. We didn't have any students, so I was really excited to see that you made a few tweets and our kids are coming. So anyone here, I just encourage you to get trained. It's really not that hard. There's a lot of online modules that you do. And then the in-person, you know, CPR, AED training. But um, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for getting that going. I really do think that it will make the community feel um, like it's our school, you know.
And that's, that's exactly what we want to do. I think those are everyone in our community and we want them to
Any questions?
Well, I just wanted to quickly say, it feels like we've been here longer than three years. You know, like that's hard to believe. It's relatively, but it's a short time and I've seen a lot of changes over time. And it's funny because just recently, I think it was last month, the whole general day um, for the PTSA that came up, people were talking about your your meetup time, like, oh, she remember when she first came on, she had those. And somebody's like, no, she still does them. And and everyone's like, yeah, good. So I appreciate that you still offer those. I think that's really important. And that's just been to me, the signature of your whole move into the district is being so open to the feedback. I know I've sat at a few of your roundtables and you had said, I can't do anything if I don't know. So I appreciate that. Um, and then the the um, graphic for the special education MTHO and transportation was so valuable. Um. I feel like not enough programs happened um, in Olympia this year, but if I, doing the advocacy for the high school and the middle school um, PTAs, I, it was helpful to show at least. And got some interesting feedback that I could share with you off-line that I need to maybe explain some of the hesitation and some of the categories that might be helpful for advocating in the future. But I just think that it just tells the story. And I mean, we're just fully falling behind and then you have to make these huge cuts. And um, so anyways, that stuff like that was super helpful and made it easy to to show and illustrate.
Are there anything else? All right. Well, thank you so much for taking the time and thank you for your attention.
Appreciate it.
All right. So I love my own spot here. All right, I'll go for one. Um, so next up and last on our agenda for tonight is the update on the twenty twenty five city clerk's office work plan with our city clerk, John Bosero.
No, uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, John Bosero, city clerk. And uh, we're going to talk about clerk stuff. So a bit of a background, starting um, on January first, we became our own department. Um, we had been one along with finance for budgetary reasons, but now we have budget. And um, most of the stuff that we continue doing, we have tried to operate as before. Um, we have made some improvements. And what we want to do is to uh, create a culture that aligns with that of this um, of the city and administration. And also increasing the levels of professionalism and expertise. Um, and as part of all of this, we created a work plan with a set of timelines and deliverables. Um, not only to hold ourselves accountable, but also to be able to show everyone what it is that we do. And a copy of that work plan was on your um, was on the packet for review. So uh, we'll go through some of those that were in the work plan. One of them was implementation of Civic Rec. So we're almost there. Uh, we use it for facilities. So if someone from the community wants to um wants to rent the visitor center, the roast room, uh, the depot, everything can be done through Civic Rec. Uh, we are working on implementing the same for the fields. That is a little more complicated. We are doing uh, a lot of the, or we are working towards getting the invoicing done through Civic Rec so that people can pay through Civic Rec. That will require a little bit more work because of it's not fairly easy to just rent the fields. There are some rules and there are, there are some things that need to be addressed. So for the time being, it is being done manually, but ideally we will have that done uh, also through Civic Rec. And as a uh, as a bit of information, we've received or completed a hundred and eight reservations through Civic Rec. Um, and that is since implementation. The next one was GOGA. Um, this is something that uh, council approved money for. And we're done. We, it's fully implemented. Um, and it's um, it's operational as the summer increases and we have more activities. We plan to increase the use, um, its use. So far, six hundred and ten people have downloaded the app. Uh, four hundred and sixty two of those are iOS and a hundred and forty eight Androids uh, users, but we hope to increase um. Hopefully we'll have something for summer stage where people can walk and go see one of the bands. They see the QR code, click on it or take a picture of it and download the app. Um, and one of the plans that we have is to also start sharing a rather than the presentation themselves, an actual um, a brief report of the city city administrators update. So the after the second meeting of the month, having those two combine into a document and use and share them with the community through uh, through GOGA. Um, cleanup of our shared drive. Um, there's quite a bit of files there. Um, and it's, it's going to take some work. Um, our idea is to uh, look at everything we've got. We're going to start with the file, the the folders that we keep council documents in as well as our own, find a better way to keep it, something that we don't have files from nineteen ninety six. There is a document there. I have seen it from nineteen ninety six. It's an actual Word document. I did not know Word was used. Thought it was Word perfect. But we intend to fix that, see uh, what we need to keep, what we can keep and also try to make it a little more accessible. So we anticipate starting this work sometime around June thirtieth. Uh, public records request, that is the four of what we do. Uh, it's one of our main uh, functions. And we hope to increase uh, the participation from Kelsey, the deputy city clerk to um, to take um, take on more uh, of this. She has had quite a lot of fun with some very interesting public records requests. Um, so um, so the idea is that we'll pass more of that responsibility over. And we're currently also doing monthly audits. Now everything is done through next request. And it has made our lives so much easier. Uh, we used to do it through email and correspondence through email and all of that. Um, and mailing stuff, uh, we now just do it through next request. Um, which, but in order, you know, we use it, we love it, but we need to make sure that we keep it nice, tidy and clean and also for the information that is there for uh, for it to be useful. So when we file the J-Lock report uh, coming up in two months, um, that we have all the information we need and it's only two, three clicks rather than going nuts and doing math. Um, I don't like doing math, so I'd rather stay away from it. Um, and as of April thirtieth, we've received fifty nine requests. Uh, thirty one were for us and twenty eight were for the police department. Um, when I say us, I have to take a step back. A lot of them are for community development and for Hollywood. And they do an excellent job at getting them, completing them and sending it our way so we can respond in a timely manner. Out of those fifty nine requests, we have closed fifty four. And just to give you just a bit of a view into uh, our world. In July, uh, I'm sorry, on during the month of May alone, we have received uh, from fifty nine, so we have received thirty four, just this month alone, and it's only twenty days. So it's been a busy month uh, for public records requests. Another one of the things is NeoGov. So what, uh, so NeoGov is this platform that we use for recruitment. All our jobs are um uh, are advertised online through uh, a cycle government jobs that come. The the tool that manages that is NeoGov. It's great. Uh, it has a lot of potential. And city administrator reached out to NeoGov. They will run an assessment and help us build to make it a one-stop shop for everything. So rather than doing things in different places, we want to make sure we do it through NeoGov and we get it from from uh, filing a job application to hiring um, or clearing out the person for hiring. We want to do it through NeoGov. Um, for this year, we have received and processed. So by process, it means we get the application, we download the application, we do relations for the hiring manager uh, to review, select, then when they select the people they want to interview, you know, the full version. Takes a long time. Uh, we have done that a hundred and twenty six times uh, from the beginning of the year uh, until just recently, for a total of four positions. So that also comes to show that a lot of people want to come to work in the city of the world, which is a wonderful thing. Um, so filing inventory and destruction. We have a lot of boxes. We really do have a lot. We have two hundred and sixty seven boxes of stuff. Um, we last year removed about fifty boxes full of records. That's all printed stuff. Um. It could be anything that is a record. Uh, we have it on an off-site facility. We want to reduce that. We want to bring all the boxes back, not all at the same time, but we want to go through every single box, look at every single file, make sure that if, that we need to keep it, if that it's, that it's still, that if, or if it's met retention, that we can dispose of it accordingly. This is not going to be done this year by no means. We don't expect to finish that soon. But we expect to start this summer and by the time we finish, I hope that we'll be in a barbed we expect to start this summer, and by the time we finish, I hope that we'll be in a better position uh, than having two hundred and sixty-seven boxes. That's just, I mean, fifty boxes, and the city administrator can correct me if I'm wrong, but fifty boxes was a lot around the office, I believe. I mean, yeah, it was not a pretty picture. Um, so now on to business licensing. That's also another one of our four functions. Um, this is done in partnership with the, the, the um, permission of Department of Community Development. Um, these are some, uh, I will say that for part of this, we used to do it on paper. Uh, this is something that is now done through OpenGov. Uh, part of it. So we have to do part of it through the Department of Revenue Portal, which is a lovely site to use. Um, but the, the part that is our end, which is the processing, particularly homeowner uh, endorsements and general businesses, they're done through OpenGov and um, community development. Created a portion of uh, OpenGov to work on this, make it more streamlined, make it a lot easier, and it has helped tremendously. Um, so as we progress along in this process, this is also part of the work that I will be sharing with Kelsey. And just as numbers, uh, just uh, for um, just for information, between Mar- uh, January and March thirty-first, we've approved four hundred and sixty-one business licenses, which include license renewals. I don't have the specific breakdown because as I said, it's such a wonderful uh, website to use, and it's not very user-friendly. So it takes quite a bit of trying to get the specific data as to the breakdown of what those four hundred and sixty-one business licenses actually were. Um, going now to uh, management of mobile devices. Uh, it is our favorite task. Um, right now, if you look on your phones, you'll see that they're actually Verizon. But the management of them is done through something called an MDM, Mobile Device Manager. And Verizon's is not very friendly. Um, it is not. It, it's probably a few, it's probably operating on Windows ninety-eight, so it's really hard to use. Um, we are exploring getting away from our current provider into FirstNet, uh, which would mean not only changing all the devices, but also using new MDM platform. Um, this is just in the kind of not step one, but more of like step two of ten uh, with FirstNet, and ideally we would redeploy new devices uh, for city staff and council. It wa- it's more than likely to happen in August. Also, FirstNet um, is a lot more affordable, so that would also bring some savings, and the MDM that they use is a lot better than the Verizon one. Sorry, please.
I just wanted to also point out for council that FirstNet is also super important because it's the official network um, that uh, allows priority access to cell phone service in emergencies. So for example, when we had the electrical fire, the fire told fire a couple of years ago, when all of our cell phones went down and even our emergency manager couldn't get a text message, Cynthia and I had to find a way to meet each other outside of town to have a conversation about what was going on. FirstNet will actually solve those problems. Um, so it'll give everybody with a city cellphone the priority service. Um, that's really gonna help power it just the whole nine yards. Um, and actually help keep our community safer. So in addition to the savings, it's, it's a long time uh, coming. It's been in process nationally for I think the entire time I've been an elected official, but it's super exciting, and it's a big project, but it's gonna definitely pay off, pay dividends for our community. So thank you, John.
Absolutely, and um, I, I would say um, kudos also to Luke Eckert. Uh, he was the one that was approached by FirstNet and started those conversations and got the ball rolling, and he actually also tested the equipment for coverage. Um, not only in the city, but also around the area, and he had a lot of great things to say about it. Uh, so now, this is more for, uh, we love our server, we do, we love it. Uh, but we want to move away from some of the stuff, some more, some of the more critical information or um, files that we have, we want to move them to the cloud, to SharePoint. Um, at least if something were to happen to servers, at least we have some of the more important information somewhere that is accessible, it's not lost. Um, so we um, are currently doing some of that work and putting stuff on SharePoint to facilitate tracker, also to um, facilitate tracking rather, and also improve user experience. Um, so that will require a build-out of the way that we have our SharePoint. Um, our, uh, Jonathan Steinbach, our administrative assistant, is working on seeking training opportunities. Um, and he's pretty nifty with a computer, which is really excellent because um, I mean, it's something that he enjoys doing, so I appreciate that very much. Um, so the idea is we'll build it out to make it a lot more accessible, to make it easier. Uh, not only for us at the city clerk's office, but also for everybody else who accesses SharePoint um, to be able to get information um, and just have it, have it more available. And um, also, uh, next would be the expansion of our city, of, of our wellness uh, program. So the wellness program is, um, the city of the world is a well city. That means that uh, we get a discount on our insur- on our health insurance if we meet certain deadlines and if we meet certain criteria. Uh, I can't remember how much the actual uh, percentage of that is. It's two percent. Thank you, Steve. Um, so um, Kelsey has done a great job at expanding um, and not only for twenty twenty-four, keeping our uh, wellness city status, but also to create more events that are not only just for the sake of having the events, but also stuff that helps with staff engagement, team building. Um, and well, also help us score some brownie points with AWC. Um, the wellness committee is now holding quarterly meetings. And we hope to involve uh, more departments within the city so that we can all participate and um, come up with a lot more um, idea, a lot more different stuff uh, to meet our requirements. So more um, additional, uh, additional projects that we're working on. We uh, are assisting with policy work. Um, currently assisting the city administrator with some policy research and writing as needed. Um, as mentioned with NeoGov, as part of the HR function, we're streamlining that, uh, we're also creating a database for all interview questions. As a repository um, for completed sheets, so after the interview. Um, and updates to the municipal code. It is, it has parts that are very outdated, that do require some updating. So I will be working on that. Um, I will probably call Cynthia once or twice um, on that, but um, hopefully when we have some part of it done, um, we'll start bringing it to council for review, approval and adoption. So by the numbers, we usually get about hundred and seventy monthly visitors to City Hall. And most of them are assisted by the clerk's office. We also get an average of four hundred and eighty-one calls per month. And um, in the month of April, we actually process nine hundred and ninety-one checks or transactions. Uh, those are mostly for utility payments, permitting, uh, utility tax. I'm sorry? Rentals, that too, thank you. Um, but uh, this is going to change soon as finance will be processing more account receivables, particularly those we get um, by pop- in the mail, uh, which will allow us to realign some of the priorities um, and work on different projects. Um, and with that, that was from our ugly sweater day. Um, thank you all.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, go ahead, Mary.
Um, I just wanted to thank you, clerk, and uh, Kelsey and your team for just some incredible work on getting up to speed. Uh, the fact that there's two hundred and sixty-seven boxes has always been a real challenge and problem. It's not good records management. Uh, the GOGA, the NeoGov, all of the um, technology that's being implemented that while it's difficult to implement, it's actually creating efficiency so that this work can get done is absolutely incredible. And I don't know truthfully how you all do it, especially with as many public records requests as we have this year, because and all the council work, because public records requests are not just simple, they take time. I mean, they take a lot of time, even the most simple ones can take hours. Um, and it's a, it's a slog to get through that, and it's all critical work um, that has not had enough attention paid to it. So thank you for all of your efforts on that.
Thank you very much, and I'd be remiss to not say that uh, today's Kelsey's first anniversary with the city of Duell putting up a poll. And um, I personally am very grateful to the excellent work that she's done through this year, um, and also for the work that Jonathan has done. He just finished probation two weeks ago, if I'm not mistaken. So um, I'm very grateful for an excellent team of uh, so thank you all.
Any questions or comments for our clerk? Um, council members, local, and then?
Yeah, I, I liked a lot of what you've been doing there. It looks good, especially moving the finance, finance aspect over to finances and getting out of the uh, check processing business. Um, one question, that's a net on the user interface. The, the dates are listed oldest first to the newest.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry?
Right here. So.
Yes.
Is that?
I have no work on that. Um, I'll figure out a way. Thank you.
Councilor Apple?
Yeah, I just, um, I, it, we're more pulled down and um, kind of out of pandemic time, and I was wondering if there was a possibility to be open on Friday um, for City Hall, if that's something that's on.
Administrator McName?
Um, so that's a question not for the clerk, but for myself and the mayor to discuss, and we can bring an answer to that question at a later date.
Okay, sure. And then I had another question about um, the retention schedule for documents. So I think that's the, you know, um, if you meet the retention, you can get rid of it. Do we have a process of deciding if we actually want to get rid of it? Because there are some things that, even though we can not keep them, we might want to keep them, and so I don't know if there is an additional oversight of like, oh, yeah, I know we could get rid of that, but oh, that's really useful. Anyway.
Thank you.
Well, your, yeah, I, I was just gonna say that that is actually not legally advisable um, under public records, uh, appropriate public record management. Um, the multiple events, um, once you've met your retention time, you should be just properly either disposing or archiving of those documents according to the state retention schedule. Um, and if you do keep documents that are not needed for retention, there's multiple things that can happen, including significant increased costs for overly burdening overly broad public records requests. So if you keep bringing, keeping your records for twenty years on things that are no longer relevant um, and are not putting, for example, are not uh, the record of action, which is things like our city, our units, our ordinances, et cetera, you're actually putting the city at significant risk, which is one of the reasons why it's so important that this records management work gets done. Uh, and I say that as a supervisor of a public records team. So um, there's a lot more to it, but that's the high level, uh, high level gist of it.
Administrator McName?
Yeah, so um, I also reviewed the destruction schedules. So the clerk puts together um, destruction, destruction schedules, and then I take a look at them before we actually um, destroy them um, pursuant to the Secretary of State um, uh, uh, retention schedule. We also sometimes will consult with the city attorney if we think that something's on the line, or if there's a legal risk to keeping it. Because according to the Secretary of State, uh, over retention is actually a global risk. So we, we tend to follow legal practices in that area.
We're getting a little, little, I have any last questions for our clerk? Uh, council member?
Another question, I just really appreciate you and Kelsey and all of you doing, you guys who just really knocked it all apart.
Thank you very much.
All right, yeah, I'm just, I have that, I meant, this was great, great presentation. Nice to be in the loop on all the things you all are working on. I know you're always working on a lot, but it's nice to get outlined and um, I appreciate all the improvements. I think it really helps um, with keeping the community in the loop and making everything accessible and easier to navigate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, um, since we're, yeah, at six fifty-six, we'll go ahead and adjourn. And be back in a few minutes. And be back in a few minutes. Great. I'd like to call the Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, DeMol City Council meeting to order at seven oh two PM, our clock will hold a little gap. If you would all please rise and join me in the place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Yes. Mayor Overlander.
Here.
Mayor Pratam Mercer. Mr. Olin.
Here.
Say first.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Supple.
Here.
Snaplin.
Here.
The Coop Bell.
Here.
Thank you. We have eight for him. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? The United may have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to proclamations. We do have two this evening. The first one is for Public Works Week. And I will read that into the record. Whereas National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association, is observed annually during May to recognize the importance of public works professionals and the critical services they provide to communities across North America. And whereas the twenty twenty-five theme People, Purpose, Presence celebrates the extraordinary dedication of public works employees who meet the needs of the community each day, demonstrating their sense of purpose or service and their presence through reliable around the clock response. And whereas the Public Works Team in the city of Duval plays a vital role in maintaining and enhancing the quality of life for all residents through essential services such as water and wastewater management, store water control, roadway and sidewalk maintenance, public spaces upkeep, emergency response and environmental stewardship. And whereas public works professionals in Duval are ever present, often working behind the scenes and in all conditions, whether they are clearing snow from public streets, ensuring proper water treatment, repairing infrastructure, or keeping our parks clean and beautiful, they are dedicated to keeping our community safe, vibrant and resilient. And whereas this week provides a meaningful opportunity to recognize and thank the individuals who bring purpose and professionalism to public service and who help make Duval a better place to live, work and play. Now, therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five as Public Works Week. I encourage all Duval residents to join me in celebrating the people of Public Works, honoring their roles and recognizing their unwavering presence in our everyday lives. Let us show our appreciation for the essential work they do and their commitment to our community's safety and well-being. The next proclamation I have is for Memorial Day. Whereas each year on Memorial Day, we pause as a nation to remember and honor the brave members of our armed forces who made the ultimate sacrifice and service to the United States of America. It is the solemn day of reflection, gratitude and unity as communities across the country gather to pay tribute to those who gave their lives to preserve the freedoms we hold dear. And whereas, since our nation's founding, generations of courageous Americans have stepped forward in times of conflict, on battlefields, across oceans, in distant skies and in quiet corners of the world to defend our democracy and stand against tyranny. Their selfless service has secured our liberties and shaped the values that define us as a people. And whereas, on this Memorial Day in twenty twenty-five, we recommit ourselves to remembering the cost of freedom. We honor not only the fallen, but also their families, who have borne unimaginable loss with dignity and strength. As a community, we extend our deepest appreciation and ensure their sacrifices are never forgotten. And whereas, we also recognize those who continue to serve today, carrying forward a proud legacy of courage and devotion. Their commitment reminds us that the spirit of service endures and our responsibility to support them remains as strong as ever. And whereas, we as a community should come together in remembrance and appreciation, not only with words, but with actions that reflect the values for which these heroes fought. Let this Memorial Day be a reminder that freedom is never free and that the memory of our fallen must forever be kept alive in the heart of our grateful nation. Now, therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the City of Duval, do hereby proclaim May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five as Memorial Day in the city of Duval. I encourage all residents to honor our fallen heroes through remembrance, community service and participation and local observations. And we will move on to comments from the from the audience. I will read into the record the rules for our our public comment period. During designated public commentary period within city council meetings, individuals are allotted a three-minute speaking duration while representatives of organizations may address the council for up to five minutes. Before presenting, kindly disclose your full name and city of residence. Each speaker and all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to individual members of council or staff. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in written form to expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office by noon on the meeting day, addressed to PO Box thirteen hundred, Duval, Washington, nine eight zero one nine, or deposited at the City Hall Dropbox located at one five five three five Main Street Northeast or by email. Please be aware that the city council, its boards and its commissions solely entertain public comment public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed material during public commentary sessions. Information intended for the mayor or the city council shall be directed to the city clerk, who will disseminate it following the committee's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written public comments and subsequently furnish them to the city council or the relevant board or commission. However, it's important to note that written comments will not be orally presented during the council or applicable board or commission meetings. Any written comments received after the noon deadline for written comments will be shared with the council at the next council meeting as part of the city clerk's report. And also a side note, we do have a public hearing this evening on a development agreement. So if you are here to speak to the development agreement, the time will come a little bit later in the meeting for that. Is there anyone present that would like to provide public comment this evening? Not seeing any, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. And with that, do I have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes and let's let the record reflect that Councilmember Mercer, Mayor Pratam Mercer, has joined the meeting.
Thank you.
Moving on to scheduled items, first up, Mayor's Report. As you can see, I was supposed to be in Washington DC this week, but due to a family emergency, I am here. And so, of course, attending the meeting today, I want to share a few things that have happened in the last week. Last Thursday evening, I had the honor and privilege to attend the police department's annual meeting with their families here at the visitor center on peace officers, when weren't they? And it was an absolutely fantastic meeting. Great information, a great sense of community, family and togetherness with the police department. And it just continues to reinforce my faith and confidence in our police department and our police chief and supportive of all of the families that continue to to watch their loved ones go off to work in our community every single day, not knowing what's going to happen. We have a fantastic group of police officers in the city of Duval that I'm incredibly grateful for and am very honored that she asked me to attend and participate in that meeting. Next up, we have, we had two ribbon cutting today. Thank you to Councilmember McHenry and Councilmember Olin for attending as well as our staff. One for the Coke Pumas Creek Colbert Replacement Project. That project, if you haven't seen it, is absolutely gorgeous. There to know that so many fish are coming back to a stream that a creek that many thought could never happen and to see it happen so quickly is absolutely extraordinary. And it goes to show that the the commitment and the work to do that project was not just critical for our our safety on our streets, but also for our environment. So thank you again to our public work staff for all the effort necessary to make that happen as well as counsel for improving that project. The next ribbon cutting we had actually encompasses two things, the improvements at our wastewater treatment plant and the remodeling of our Public Works Building. We were honored to have Senator Monica Dingra, who was one of the sponsors of our capital budget request several years ago to get the funding for the refurbishment of the police department building as well as the public works building to get us another ten to fifteen years down the road before actually having to have a new building to support all of our staff. The building is gorgeous. It was great attendees. We also had Mr. Lujan from the Executive Braddick's office in King County. And it was a wonderful that staff led tours for the building. People were definitely impressed with the change in the building as well as you know, the commitment of our staff to doing this work. So thank you for that. With that, I I will go ahead and cut it off there and then turn it over to the city administrator for her report.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Mayor said, our members of the community staff. So Cynthia McNam, city administrator. And first up tonight is Public Works. You are going to see something a little different because we're going to be issuing the city administrator report internally to staff as well as the public. The clerk and the finance team will also be offering information in the city administrators' report. So almost all of our departments will be administrative departments will be covered. The administrator report moving forward. So first up, we have Barbara Longevsky.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Staff and citizens, Steve Longevsky, Public Works. For quick updates here, greeting, we have an engage in a offer and going through a process for the city's Assistant Civil Engineer position. And we are, we are planning our departure of our long tenured superintendents and working on a transition plan for that. Expect to be gone probably early in twenty twenty-six, so less than one, eh, seventy months. Working on that, this Public Works Week, as you've heard a couple of times, and I would say to you, like city, city administrator's office, McMahon, Rita Moreno, Sarah Ruin, and coordinating all this and graphics and invites. It's actually someone from Schreier's office was also here wearing rubber boots expecting to get really dirty. She was pretty funny. But yeah, it was a great, a great event. We don't think enough time to showcase the work that does go on here. So working on that and you too. And then tomorrow is the Touch and Truck event. I'm sure there's other notes on that, but two o'clock at the Depot Park parking lot, you'll be able to sit inside a backhoe or a dump truck, snow plow, throw a piece of equipment. Next slide. Quick update on projects, if you haven't been up top near Jet Park, delivery occurred yesterday of all the large steel pieces for the park cover. So all will go up over the next few weeks and then it will take some time to get the covers because don't they actually put all the members up? They will just take one more measurement to create sails. They are fabric sail. So that's going on. We did close the park off. There will be some fairly deep excavations for the structures, the foundations for those mounts. So they're about ten to twelve feet deep. Let's see, I did have a quick conversation today with some folks. We might look at an interlocal agreement with maybe there would be school districts for some support, some system support more for stormwater and then maybe surfacing that we might be able to take advantage of. Even though we do a lot of like overlays, for instance, they usually bring bigger equipment out. Well, let's say we did a parking lot with the school, they might bring some smaller machinery out. We can get a little more length for our block in volume too, right? It's all about length. So we're, we're going to talk to those folks about maybe doing some of that support if it can work for both sides, but nothing in writing and all interlocals can come to the council. So do anything without talking to you folks anyway, but just letting you know. Next slide. And if you haven't seen it, they are working on the deck covered project down at Depot Park. So that will be done before Duval Day's weekend. So they're putting that in when they can. Get some folks coming in on days off to put a help out and get it done as it is an extra task. Next slide. If you haven't seen this, it's been quite a while. Prior to twenty twenty, actually, we were approached by Seattle, not not Seattle Utility, but Seattle Pacific University in conjunction with Bullen Park Zoo. The map on the right of the location of cameras in a system they are managing and counting carnivores, wild carnivores, of course. So there is thousands of hits and they send us a report and subsequently one came and I showed it. The the camera they have in Duval is in the northeast quadrant of town just behind Taylor's Ridge on some same rotary that they were peeking at. It's mostly bear and deer, but there are cougar links. Every other thing that eats, raccoons are wandering. So yeah, lots of that that group is is working on. So that's pretty fun. And they share that periodically with us. Next slide. The flower pots, so working with this Ne'er Is High School Horticulture Class. They have built the pots. And it was already posted today by a neighboring city. But if you haven't, if you haven't seen that, we've heard the kids putting the pots together last week. Ace helped and got all the plant set costs to provide the soil fertilizer and pot, pots themselves. They built them, they'll harden them off and send their greenhouse and we'll get them next Thursday. Next slide. So I think creations and jewels will be very similar, if not exactly the same.
Any questions for Director Longevsky?
This is on something that you presented, but I was, I was walking where that entrance would be to the bike trail and there's a road that goes down in there. I'm too spooked to go by myself, but my son was with me. The reason I'm spooked is that bear in that picture.
There were, there were bears.
Yeah. And anyway, that road goes quite a way down. I've never known what that is. And I thought there's a bunch of work being done down there. Something being put in and I was feeling it might be left of more for Northville, but I'm not sure. I don't know what it is, but there's lots of fencing and.
There's a short climb in the county down there. So there's access to a physical lock of a home in the county.
Okay.
And then there is, the city of Duval does have Stormy Utility that goes from that area all the way to the dock for and discharges the chair cream.
Okay. It's like a thing with like, you know, the road protection.
Construction fencing type orange grid.
No, like actual, like the time you would have around. Anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it might have been a county requirement for their subdivision.
Okay, yeah, it was interesting. I didn't know. And then I thought, oh, well, maybe we're making progress on the mountain bike trail thing. I wasn't really sure.
Yeah, we're waiting on grant application response on that. But yeah, no. We do go back there. I do think Benny went back in the last few or three weeks to check on some storm stuff, but yeah.
Hey, Director Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Melissa from the Watershed Forum and members of the community. So we're in a really busy cycle, like obviously this year. This month, we have almost a dozen hearings between all the different policy work that we're working on, including land use options permits as well. So we had our first public hearing on the ADU policy at Planning Commission last week. Tonight is the council's public hearing. At your next, at at our next planning mission meeting, we will have a sign code public hearing and then in June, at your first meeting, you'll have the public hearing through a limited sign code update. We have a comp plan public hearings next week and then following after that at council on June third. Our hearing documents are due tomorrow, so they'll get posted to our website. You've probably seen a lot of emails from our department recently with notice of obligations, TIPA and hearing notices. I started the preliminary. Uh, I started the preliminary um, review of the parking policy update. And so I've been working on that for about, well, a couple of weeks. And we've got that project to take about four or five months. It'll be a limited update to what our statutory requirements are, similar to the, to the ADU policy. Uh, we are gonna be issuing our RFP at the um, next week. And so you'll see a contract come through probably the second meeting in July and that's about this month project as well. We're also gonna be bringing more, you know, lot subdivision and code housing. Um, updates and those are both due by the end of the year. They're part of our statutory requirements. And so we're actually starting to move those forward internally as well. Next slide. Uh, we are actively working on code enforcement. We're preparing for the policy update. We've already started looking at and drafting a user manual. Um, what we do want to do is provide information, education and listening sessions as we're going through this update. Code enforcement is one of the most difficult um, job tasks that um, our department has. Um, we did send out a neighborhood postcards, about ninety-nine postcards, because we were seeing and received complaints. About parking over the sidewalk. Um, we are gonna be looking at uh. Temporary signage and sidewalk cafes as part of our communication with our businesses this summer. The, we did a survey of our um, existing permits and the vast majority of our sidewalk cafes and temporary signs. Are unpermitted at this time, so we're gonna work with our businesses to get permits and, and get them legally established. Uh, current development, uh, the main street project, which is down with Duval Village. Uh, they'll be going to design review pretty soon, so early July with the hearing in August. We received a new project in for the Jane Society. Uh, the Moss Project uh, is resubmitting uh, their project here in the next ten days. Uh, we also are issuing. Um, a notice of complaint out for a couple of other things that have come in that are really small. Uh, and Toll Brothers submitted their lot five and so they already have their first review. So that one's going pretty quickly. Uh, this week we have the public hearing for. Uh, the commercial daycare, which is adjacent to our parks in phase three and four of Toll Brothers. And we were notified uh, this week that it is likely we will get a ten percent petition in June for the North Urban Growth Area.
All right, direct, uh, questions for Director Thomas?
Okay, next slide. Uh, we will start with the city clerk for a couple of dates from that team.
I'll keep it shorter this time, I promise. Uh. Let's see, we um, completed the first draft provision, uh, the first draft for Civil Service Commission, um. Rules and procedures and uh, we also completed a first draft of the filming policy. So we will do more internal work before that comes um, to council. Uh, we received eight requests for uh, proposals for our printer and scanning services. Um, and where they're currently being scored. And we hope to have new printers, um. One of them included, well, two, one of them will be. A high capacity printer for City Hall and another one would be a plotter for community development, hopefully by mid-June. And as a reminder, uh, flag retirement ceremony at Depot Park on the twenty-second of May. From six thirty to eight o'clock.
Well, turn it over to Governor uh, McMahon for Finance Department update.
Yeah, so we are doing really well on our annual financial report. Um, we've got pretty much set to go. We're in a really comfortable place, just. Tweaking and reviewing everything. Um, I wanna say, just having been here the length of time I have been, um. Everything reconciled very well because it was all things that, you know, I myself had managed and. Had an understanding of throughout the year, so things have come together really nicely and we're ready, we're gonna be submitting that sometime this week. Um, also, our annual King County Parks Levy annual report has been submitted. Um. I um, had the pleasure of attending our uh, Labor Relations Institute, um, with Director Thomas, um. Blown away by all the information, um, excellent trainings, um, got some in-depth information on costing. Um, like the labor negotiation ones for contracts, um, did some networking, met some really great people. And so I really appreciate having that opportunity um, to go to that conference.
Questions for the clerks department and finance, Steven, do you sense?
Councilmember Natalie, um, I have one, I, I think I wanted to bring up on the civil service commission, there's a social media post. And it doesn't say anything about um, that it had to do with hiring and policies of uh, police officers. And maybe I just. Didn't know, but before I was on council, I didn't realize what the civil service did. I didn't know it had anything to do with police officers. I'm embarrassed to say that, but I was wondering if maybe that could be made clear uh, of what uh, the civil service. Uh, switch department, um, they oversee hiring. But maybe everyone else knew what that was. But I did.
No, we're happy to take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Next one.
Okay, a few things for me. Um, so as already discussed, um, we had ribbon cuttings on Monday. It was really lovely. So beyond everything that has already been said, I will share that Senator Dingra pulled me aside. And talked about how impressed she was with what she saw in Duval and mentioned that. Um, you know, we take really good care of our infrastructure. It was very impressive and. Paraphrasing, but it makes it a lot easier for her to advocate for Duval. When she comes out and sees, you know, our staff, our staffer really engaged. I think that wastewater treatment plant tour was about an hour long. So.
That was leading it, wasn't it?
Yeah, from the wastewater treatment plant, they were throwing in, they were talking to the kids, it was really engaging. Uh, I will share Congresswoman Schreier, as uh, Director Landeski mentioned. Came in jeans and boots, prepared to slog through. To the wastewater treatment plant and she was like, I have never seen anything like this. This is the most impressive thing. Um. In case you don't know, they have vegetable gardens out there and the row um, to the right when you look. Is a strawberry bed and her and I were laughing that you could pick strawberries out there and have strawberry shortcake because the. Heating conditions at the plant are really conducive to vegetable growing and she was absolutely charmed by it, so um, it was a really nice day, thank you to staff. Um, so we're kind of in. Uh, policy review, I'm taking a look at revising the social media policy um, to address and explain some rules regarding. Um, social media being limited public forum and the administration of our social media messages and content. So um, there have been some cities that have done pretty substantial reviews then two thousand, uh, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Good models for us to look at likely come to council in July. Um, I'm working on an application to the USDA for grants, um. There's a grant program that has about five different components to it. Uh, to augment and invest in the Duval farmers market. That's due on July thirtieth. I met with representatives from the farmers market last week to talk about. What their hopes, what their needs, how do they want the farmer's market to grow. Uh, so working on that. And then the cultural commission selected a winner of the summer stage merchandise concept. The fourth grader from Cherry Valley Elementary. It's absolutely adorable, um, so they'll be coming on social media. Um, we'll be creating t-shirts and merchandise for summer stage for the twenty-sixth anniversary. It's really cute. But, um, so as I mentioned at the beginning of the council workshop. Uh, had the opportunity to work with Port of Seattle to revise a grant application process. Uh, Port of Seattle is now doing a two-year grant cycle, so they want to see forty thousand dollars in work. Um, because it's a, a match. So ten thousand each year from the Port of Seattle, ten thousand from us. Port of Seattle, um, have kind of been a little mixed messaging around what. Work they want to see for their grant match. We put in a concept, it was more kind of small business infrastructure related. Um, talked to them, they wanted to pivot a little bit more to special events that are um. Kind of geared towards business promotion, so. Um, this has been blessed by the Port of Seattle. We can submit it, but I wanted to present it to council first, um, for discussion, so. The revised concept that the port is happy with is in twenty twenty-five, ten thousand dollars to the music crawl. I had an opportunity to meet with um, the chamber. Ten thousand will not cover the full cost of the music crawl, so the chamber has committed to Morgan. Um, that they will cover what's not covered by the Port of Seattle, um, for that music crawl event. Um, I'm not sure what their, you know, voting requirement is, but I know that they had meetings and they've. Shared with me that there's a commitment there to show the cost. I don't know what percentage, but Morgan did share ten thousand is not the full cost for the music crawl. Um, and then for twenty twenty-six, the ports portion would be to reinvigorate the distillery. Our wine walk and partnership with the Duval Chamber of Commerce. Many members of the community, including uh, the shop that's. Uh, next to Armored Amarillo. Um, you know, she gets very few walk-in and has asked us to. Really try to focus on things that will bring foot traffic to the businesses. And we had mentioned this and it was funny, the day I got the Port of Seattle blessing on this, she wrote to Rita and said. I would really like to see the art and wine walk. So um, Port of Seattle liked the idea. Next slide. So then for our portion, um. Things that we could do for our city match that will um. Complement those two things, but also offer some new things to the city. So going back to the beautifying of the visitor center so that we can be part of a music crawl and art and wine walk and be a place that. People will want to stop and small businesses can um, you know, put people down here to eat and listen to music. Um, we also uh, talked to the port about creating small business opportunities here. For pop-up markets or pop-up, a pop-up game night where we could have individual vendors. Um, doing uh, uh, visits. While we have other things going on like a, you know, street party down here for game night, outdoor game night. Um, we also talked about this toddler time, pop-up toddler times here. We've heard, uh, Rita and I particularly have heard from. Our families with really young children, that we don't have enough young children here in the city. So we would pair that, we've been um, approached by the children entrepreneur market. To do children's entrepreneur markets and women and children pop-up farmers markets, so we pair that with these like pop-up toddler. So next slide. And this would give you a sense of what that would look like, those um, children's entrepreneur markets. They really wanted the farmers market, pop-up market, small vendors being promoted with an emphasis on. Women in minority-owned businesses. Next slide. And this is a kind of like the equipment that we would get with some turf to lay out um, in the back of the visitor center and then promote that as. You know, something for our families to come and do when we have, you know, whether it's a. Ice cream vendor, but the opportunities for small businesses to come and share in some of those activities. And I think that is it. Oh, yep, touch a truck tomorrow. This is the older flyer, but uh, we, the new flyer has shaved eyes, um, Rita's office has really adorable construction house. That we have, uh, we have stickers. That have trolls from the um, bridge inside a dump truck and inside a snowplow. They're really cute. Um, so it's gonna be fun tomorrow, so please come out if you can. And I think that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Shaper?
Uh, yeah, just some clarification on the Port of Seattle grant. Is that a done deal at this point?
It is not a done deal, so I have to re-apply for it. So the way the Port of Seattle works now with their grant application is you pre-apply. And they tell you whether or not they like what you've applied for. And they'll send back like, hey, think about this differently. Um, you know, we'll agree to this, but not that. So this is our second submission to the Port of Seattle and this package. Fail it.
Okay, and what do you? What do you think our chances of getting that one is?
Hmm, ninety-nine point nine percent.
Oh, whoa, that's great news. Okay.
And that's why they do the pre-application.
Yeah.
So that when you submit the final, they've kind of blessed what you've asked for and. You can be pretty confident that you'll get what. Um, you've asked for. I also talked to the Port of Seattle because the music crawl. Um, have to be turned around extremely quickly and I've talked to Morgan about that. I told them that we were coming to council tonight and she will work with us to turn around the. Um, agreement really quickly so we can convey to Morgan if council wants to do this project. So that he can get going on because he's waiting, finding out about this.
Great, that's, that's really exciting, that's really exciting.
Uh, Councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, thank you for all of that. I was really excited about the children's entrepreneur idea. Is that something, I don't know, I just pulled it up. And I, I don't have time to read through any of it, you know, offhand, is there like a cost for kids to register, to sell their stuff, do they try to make it an all-free? I was just wondering if there was, it might be fun to try it, but then replicate it somehow and, you know.
That's kind of what we were thinking that they, so initially when they approached us, they wanted to do summer stage. I said no because alcohol is served at summer stage and just didn't feel like the right match. Um, but they are still interested in coming. I don't know all the economics of it, but we could certainly, if it's. Cough prohibitive, there's no reason why we couldn't do a lighter version of that, do a call for vendors.
One follow-up that I can. The idea, cause looking back, we'll be talking about foot traffic, you know, sometimes uh, it's groups I'm a part of, they do big sales out here with the store. Owner's blessing because, you know, it helps pull people in and, oh yeah, I'll go and I'll take those while I'm there, so just curious if, you know, down the road, we can think about offering. Something like that, like a sidewalk kind of kid sale or even just doing it in, in this building here, um, but. Might help bring more people downtown and, and, you know, patronize the other shops.
Councilmember Natalie?
I was curious about um, the equipment for like a toddler time, are, are you thinking of that, you know, outdoors or?
Okay, yeah, outdoors here. So our original port concept that I presented to council was. Um, really structured around activating this space with. Tables and chairs and lighting. We can still do that with the city's money. Um, but we couldn't use that for the poor um, money, so this would be, um, and. If you recall, it pairs with the council member Perry Grant that we put in for Get Active Stay Active, which was to ask for um, a bunch of outdoor. Like large game net equipment so that we would start using this parking lot behind visitor center. To like bring people down here to do things so that our businesses would get more foot traffic. So that's the idea. It would be meant for outdoor summer. Um, in the parking lot. It's kind of the concept. I mean, we could use it anywhere, but that's what's in my head, around the use of it and programming for it.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Stappel.
Yeah, I'm glad to see the art and wine walk back in play, because that was uh. It's been several years, but it was quite a bit of people there. I was in attendance for that and. You know, one thing it does, it forces people to go into the stores because the wine and the art are in stores, so you're not just walking by like on Duval days. You're not just walking about.
I went to the North Bend one that they had a couple of weeks ago and there were a ton of people on the street.
Yeah, I think they're really proud.
Uh, Councilwoman Shaper?
Um, not, not really a question, more of a, um, comment, I guess. I, I'd love to see a beer. Distillery and wine block with, and obviously with Andy's Valley House, so including annoying him, he'd probably be really happy to. Participate in that.
Yeah, it was more of a spirits, like all things alcohol and.
Yeah, okay, okay. But the, the other reason I like that and, and also including Jay's Distillery is because. That especially that, that north area of the town seems to be integrated better, right? And this has been an opportunity to do that, so, so. Great, great idea.
Uh, Director Landeski?
A quick question, I didn't hear it and then you shared it, the two large sponsors for events?
Oh, yeah, I haven't. We don't have all of our sponsors at for Duval, um, or for summer stage, but I think. We don't have all of our sponsors at for Duval um or for summer stage, but uh thank you for today that um we already had Remas um as our big sponsor for summer stage. But I heard today that Comcast is also going to conquer summer stage with the, that's healthy um sponsorship, so. Here.
All that worked for him here, played off the menu. All right. Um, all right. Well, thank you, City Administrator McNabb and team for your updates. Uh do any councilmembers have any reports this evening? Councilmember McHenry.
Slowly trying to remember that again. Um on the ribbon cutting, I won't repeat all of what third even said, but they were awesome. The tour was amazing. Um all the staff were so interactive and so passionate about what they do and every question anyone asked, their eyes just lit up because they were so excited to tell the answer to that. So and, and of course the over-ification is just beautiful. I mean, truly beautiful and you, you know, it's testament that the fish are coming back and the deer are getting in there and eating all the new plantings. I mean, that's it created a great place. Um.
Were the fish in the river?
Yeah, I, yeah, there's been fish in there. So and, and then lastly, just to kind of reshed light, we're coming to the end of the school year. Um but I just intended for Empower Youth Network, the mentor appreciation event, and there were so many people there and I know that's only a small sampling of the people that mentor um in our school district and the Snoqualmie School District, but if you ever have a little extra time each week, I got sucked into this and I've been doing it for since earlier this year. And you know, once you wedge out that little slot of time, it's really easy to keep going back and showing up. And so um just would really encourage people to explore it. Takes a little bit of time for onboarding, to get trained, do the background and all that, but it's really worth it and it's a great way to just get back to the community, especially since there are so many mentors, but the need is increasing. The kids really need the support. So it's a great program.
Thank you. Anyone else have any reports this evening? All right, and we'll go ahead and move on to presentations. Um and okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh councilmember Reverser or Mayor Reverser.
Yeah, um I, I just have a brief update. I, I wasn't actually able to attend the, the pick meeting in person this month. The Microsoft reorgs happened that afternoon and my organization was impacted significantly. So um but I did have sort of just a summary and I can come back to the next meeting if there's questions from council. Um you know, we, we did a broad uh co- committee update, um which is sort of more from the, the various regional committees. I think the big updates were around the EMS levy and there was a lot of, of the cities weighed in in terms of how it was structured, the analysis, initial analysis that was done. I think the, the sentiment across cities was pretty positive in terms of, of the, the, the investment in time that went into structuring the levy. Um there was also an update on the, the solid waste division rate changes coming potentially, uh well, not potentially, but coming in twenty twenty six. And again, uh I, I'll gather some additional information and bring that into a, an upcoming meeting. I think the one that was most relevant is there was a request for, for individual cities to come back to pick with their levy plans for the remainder of the year. So obviously, we're still working through that in terms of the consultants and the RFPs, but again, I wanted to sort of share that back to the city in terms of the topics. And uh again, when I uh get the final uh readout of the minutes, I, I can bring that to the next meeting and we can discuss any of those topics in, in more detail.
Thank you, Mayor Prent. All right. Uh so now we will move on to presentations. Uh we have an update on the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum from Alyssa Ostergaard from this who's our salmon recovery manager for the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum.
Lovely to be here this evening. My name's Alyssa Ostergaard. Please share an update on the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum. And this is a kind of ahead of your renewing and then approving the interlocal agreement for the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum that will happen later this summer. So next slide. So my purpose here is to provide you with an update on the city's involvement with the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum and a context to provide context for you're considering the interlocal agreement renewal. So I'll go over sort of the salmon recovery governance and organization, the salmon habitat plan that governs top chat restoration in our watershed, the, an overview of the interlocal agreement and the timeline, some of the funding and accomplishments that the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum has had over the years and then what the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum is looking like. That next slide. So the state of Washington passed the Salmon Recovery Act in nineteen ninety eight in anticipation of Chinook and Bolt trout being listed as threatened under the Endangered Species Act or the ESA in nineteen ninety nine. This act allows groups around the state to organize and conduct research and planning to develop recovery plans and fund restoration efforts rather than relying on the federal government to dictate to us what actions we would take. Their first interlocal agreement took effect in two thousand and one for the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum and uh shortly after that, the Snohomish Basin Salmon Recovery Plan was completed in two thousand and five. It was adopted by all the jurisdictions in our basin and then by NOAA in two thousand and seven as part of the Puget Sound Salmon Recovery Plan. The plan has goals for habitat restoration that are intended to recover salmon by the year twenty fifty five, so fifty one. So moving to the chart on the right, you can see that historically around thirty one thousand adult Chinook salmon would return to the Snoqualmie Basin each year to spawn. Since annual surveys started in nineteen sixty five, we've been seeing less than ten percent of historic numbers and the goal is to reach return, returns between five thousand and twenty five thousand Chinook adults each year by twenty fifty five. The change, changes that have impacted the watershed and caused salmon numbers to plummet started over a hundred and fifty years ago in eighteen seventy um with, you know, railroads and logging and other impacts. So we can't expect to turn things around overnight. That's why we're taking this long-term approach and working together. Next slide, please. So in the upper right, the governor's salmon recovery office, together with other state and federal agencies, defined eight salmon recovery regions in, in the state at the map in the middle based on the fish populations listed under the Federal Endangered Species Act. The primary purpose of a regional recovery organization is to prepare a federally approved regional recovery plan and oversee its implementation. Regional organizations also work with the governor's salmon recovery office and recreation and conservation office to report on recovery progress. Lead entities for each watershed, um and you can see a watershed map for King County on the right, are the backbone for locally based recovery efforts and they bring together tribes, federal and state agencies, local governments, citizens, nonprofits, businesses and technical experts to make local decisions. They prioritize projects to maximize the public's investment and use habitat strategies and priorities in their recovery plans to guide project lists. In our basin, the Snohomish slash like Gakomish slash Snoqualmie, Snohomish County is the lead entity. The Snoqualmie Watershed Forum was organized to give a voice to the King County jurisdictions and tribes and help implement and track recovery specifically in the King County portion of the basin, which is shown here. And the group does coordinate very closely with the Snohomish County lead entity. But please. The salmon habitat plan shown, shown here, the Snohomish River Basin Salmon Conservation Plan is a science-based plan for salmon uh focused on our Snohomish Basin that was created and ratified by local governments in the nineteen nineties and two thousands. And we're still implementing the fifty-year habitat goals and strategies, updating project lists as we work through implementation and constantly monitoring to see how we can improve. This snapshot on the lower right is from the Snoqualmie fifteen-year status report that our team published in twenty twenty two. And it shows progress towards those twenty fifty five goals, restoring riverbanks, planting trees along streams, creating complex flood channels, and adding large watercourses. And I have a small stack of them uh with me today. I know you guys don't like paper, but we printed a lot, so I'll leave a few key on. Next slide, please. The ambitious project list from twenty fifteen, we're at the location of the project search here. Individually completing over sixty habitat projects throughout the water zone. I think we're pretty close to that. Our team will be completing a five-year status report next year to update these maps and is also working on an updated ten-year project list which we expect to complete by the end of this year. Next slide. The Snoqualmie Watershed Forum partnership exists to support science-based project development and prioritization and has been able to direct funding to the most important places in the watershed for habitat improvements and other efforts to recover salmon. These investments include over forty million dollars from local sources, including the King County Flood Control District and King Conservation District as well as quite a lot of state funding directly into our watershed since nineteen ninety eight. These tables on the left, I don't expect you to read them, but they show a list of locally funded projects in or near Duval between nineteen ninety eight and twenty twenty four. And you can see that over two million dollars for restoration, tree planting and riparian areas, education and outreach and basic weed management, fish passage has been funded in or near Duval. Next slide, please. The Snoqualmie Watershed Forum is governed by the provisions in the interlocal agreement. And there are eight parts to the agreement. As you can see on this list, Duval, Carnation, North Bend, Snoqualmie, Gakomish, Snoqualmie Tribe, and Tulare tribes. Elected officials or designated senior staff are members of the forum and participate in six meetings per year. Each jur- jurisdiction and tribe in the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum's King County Islandland Partnership pays an annual cost share with the twenty twenty five cost share shown here. Duval's share this year is four thousand seven hundred and fifty three dollars. The annual budget supports the service provider team at King County, which includes two full-time and two part-time employees. I manage the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum staff team and am the principal liaison with elected officials from each jurisdiction. Our team supports the work of implementing the salmon habitat plan by coordinating an annual grant round of around two point two million dollars for projects that align with planned priorities and we work closely with partners in Snohomish County to plan and fund priority projects. Councilmember Rick Schaffer is on the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum and Duval's alternate seat is currently vacant. Councilmember Schaffer also represents the forum on the King County Fish Farm Flood Committee, which is very important for many overall local landowners and land um use decisions and agreements and several state, city staff participating in forum and committee meetings. Including Dr. Pana. Next slide, please. So um we are excited for another ten years of partnership to continue our work towards improving watershed health and recovering salmon. And the interlocal agreement process that we've gone through this past year, we, in early twenty twenty four, I contacted each of the eight parties to the interlocal agreement to designate a contact and make sure they were able to work with attorneys. King County first went through the interlocal agreement to suggest changes for consistency because it has three interlocal agreements, one for each of the three watersheds. We circulated drafts uh first in July and August, then there were two opportunities to meet and discuss at a, a separate meeting of the parties in September and a forum meeting in September. Um then there were more drafts circulated, another meeting in November. There was an um opportunity for attorney input in July and we offered an attorney meeting in October. Nobody took us up on that. Um and the Snoqualmie Watershed Forum approved the interlocal agreement in their January fifteenth meeting. Sure. Next slide, please. So yes, we are excited to um to do this work and uh I think you know that Chinook are one of the favorite foods of orca or southern resident orcas and so we're hoping to recover them at the same time. Next slide, please. We have a lot to celebrate. There's a lot of science showing that many areas watershed conditions are improving. There's more diverse bug communities. There's more complex habitat. New funding has been coming available over the past few years, supporting land acquisition, streamside tree planting, projects with multiple benefits of flood reduction and habitat restoration. And this year is the twentieth anniversary of these partnerships using interlocal agreements across the three major watersheds in King County. Next slide. So we hope to accelerate progress by continuing to invest in good science and planning, efficiencies across grant programs and permitting especially and implementing large restoration projects and those with flood risk reduction and other benefits. Fish farm blood, flood that I mentioned earlier is so important for reaching agreements with local landowners and balancing the needs of the community. With recent priorities, fish passage barriers, we hope to restore fixed fish access to more streams as well. Next slide. So there's a lot to look forward to. Let's answer any questions you may have and here's my contact information if you need to reach me.
Um thank you. Uh councilmember Kuthol.
Yeah, um all the pets to now and fisheries in particular. How is that gonna end up?
Yeah, um I think it's uh there have already been some impacts, like there have been some grant programs that have been pulled right after we'd already spent a lot of time working on proposals, but there have been others that have not. So I know there are a lot of federal staff at DPA and NOAA especially that we work with quite closely that are leaving positions, taking early retirement. Um so I think it's going to be really devastating to the science in the region. And I think the funding is, you know, there's been a real boon of uh federal funding for habitat restoration in our basin. There have been I mean, tens of millions of dollars invested in vestuary restoration in the Snohomish County side of our basin with the Inflation Reduction Act and the bipartisan infrastructure law. Those are clearly going away. So I think it's um it's a, it's a sad time to see the, all the pulling back of funding. We were just finally getting up to what we had been saying. This is what we need to actually recover salmon. And so I think there's, and there'll be some impacts. I think it's you know, since our, our team and most of the people we work with are local, it's not directly impacting our staff or our budget. So that's good news.
Councilmember Nathalie.
Yeah, I was looking on the map and it looked like there were a couple of projects that were in McCormick Park. I'm not sure if they were old projects or if it's an upcoming one, but it was project fifty seven and thirty eight. I don't know if you, you know, if we have any um map or.
Well, I think there was a Co-Plummons project um that was in or near McCormick Park.
We have a lot of invasive species and shoreline struggles.
Yeah, I know. I'm very aware of the shoreline struggles. And yeah, there are a lot of nonprofits that are doing a lot of invasive weed control work around the area. So I wouldn't be surprised if that was what one of those was.
Oh.
But I know, sorry.
It's okay.
So talk my.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Uh councilmember Sheen.
One more, more of a comment, another question. First of all, thank, thank you, Alyssa, for being here. You're an excellent overview. Uh Alyssa and her staff do an absolutely superb job managing the forum uh and organizing uh our discussions and helping us make the right decisions in those forms of funding and where time and effort is uh is allocated. The uh, the, the really the devastation that's been done here, uh you could best see by that slide that you had or showed the historic levels of salmon and what they are uh now. There's, there's a lot of work yet to be done. However, our existing work over the last few decades has has yielded significant value as far as habitat restoration. I had the opportunity to tour a number of the restoration projects, and they're phenomenal. And they are working, they are absolutely working. There's no doubt about that. The game metrics is a major part of the forum's policy, and we do measure very carefully the fish that go in and the fish that come back. And keeping in mind, there's so many obstacles for us to, basically for the, really for the fish to fish. Not only the population increases we've seen here, the pollution we've seen as a result of the population, the global warming, certainly a major impact. So, you know, a lot of that, a lot of work still needs to be done with us, but it is a absolutely significant effort and significant accomplishment that this organization and related organizations have been been able to do. So obviously, being a member of the forum and being a member of Fish Farm and Flood Advisory Committee, this is all very near and dear to my heart. But, but more importantly, it's doing good. It's doing what it has intended to do. Some people think it's very expensive. I, I take, you know, issue to that. I believe salmon are the canary in coal mine here. This area is no longer support, able to support salmon. We're going to turn it into another, you know, another it's on the east coast that has no, you know, river that has no fish, isn't suitable to drink or anything, anything else. We can and will prevent that from happening by efforts, efforts like these. So anyway, thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you. Thank you. So now we'll move on to our public hearings this evening. We have three. We have one on accessory dwelling units policy update, one on a development agreement amendment for Duval Village, and one for our park impact fee. We will open and close them separately, but before I begin the first one, I will read the public hearing rules into the record. In adherence to the regulations outlined for public hearings before the Duval City Council, Chapter Nine of the City Council Procedures Manual, any individual seeking to address the council during the designated public comment segment must comply with the following procedures. First, sign in on the provided form specific to the public hearing, and second, thoroughly complete all pertinent sections of the said form. Upon commencement of the hearing, as announced by the chair, typically the mayor, the city clerk will present the chair with a sign-in sheet. Subsequently, the chair will proceed with the agenda for the public hearing. Each speaker will be summoned to the podium in the order listed on the sign-in form, where they must communicate their name and, if relevant, their address, affiliation with any organization or group being represented, and their corresponding role or position within said organization or group. Time limits for speaking are three minutes for individuals representing themselves and five minutes for those representing a group or organization unless otherwise determined by a majority vote of the council present. The city clerk will monitor and enforce these time limits, setting a timer for each speaker. Comments should be pertinent to the subject matter of the public hearing and respectfully addressed to the city council, with personal remarks being deemed inappropriate. Disorderly conduct, including disruptive behavior such as booing or harassment, will not be tolerated and may be resolved and removed from the premises. Speakers may alternatively submit written statements, which will be added to the official record by the city clerk. Questions posed during the hearing will not be answered immediately, but may be addressed at the chair's discretion following the close of the common period. Copies of city council and public hearing procedures will be available upon request and distributed to attendees at the earliest outset of each public hearing session conducted by the Duval City Council. And with that, I will open the first public hearing on accessory dwelling units policy update with Director Laura Thomas from Community Development.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. The first of our, the alcohol for the development amendment. Oh, I'm sorry. It says re-dwelling yet. Or forgot that. So the theme we're looking at after DNC fourteen point four eight. This is related to the new statutory requirement. One section on legislative intent, and the other is on rotation of local regulations. Next slide. So let's just talk about kind of where we have come from and where we're at with the theme. The plan began the process of the update in late twenty twenty-four. The first draft policy was completed in early twenty twenty-five for the Planning Commission and City Council. We are currently in commerce review for about another week. We issued our statement of termination. We did receive one comment, and that is within your staff report and the exhibits. It was from Snohomie Tribe. The analysis of existing ADUs within the community, so that was one of the items that came up at Planning Commission and Council. And you'll see that there was an exhibit in your staff report where we have done analysis of the ADUs that we have for the lead pipe, both at the eve level and also at the roof level. We also voted at some community comparables, and that would be kind of what we call our sister cities. So here's Snohomie, North Bend, Woodinville, Monroe. We also looked at community engagement. That was really important, the Planning Commission and Council. We created a webpage that we created really for all of our development regulations this year, since we have quite a few. We created an FAQ. We did a fairly large social media blitz, which was pretty successful. And then we also did an open house in concert with our Conference of Plan update and also our Earth Day event. And then we also looked at doing a engagement and preference survey. We did this at our open house, and then we also did it with our planning commission. Next slide. So this is really what we call the guidepost. So what is statute? And where do we fit into that statute? For the most part, we kept our policy within the boundaries of, of the minimums essentially, and we didn't look at a lot of other items to like add or take out unless it was statutory. So we're required to allow two ADUs per parcel. They can be attached, detached, or a combination of both. We now have to allow ADUs in all zones that allow single-family zoning. So in your packet, you'll see that as part of this update, in all zoning designations are four, four point five, six, eight, twelve, and mixed use. All of those will, moving forward, allow accessory dwelling units. ADU can be up to a thousand square feet. That was the new state minimum, so it's a little bit larger than our existing standard. Owner occupancy requirement is no longer allowed, so we had to remove that from our policy. And everybody now be allowed as well, so we placed that within our new standard. There were a couple of choices for parking, and Planning Commission talked about this at length for the most part between Planning Commission and Council. And so you can require no parking, or you can require one parking space if a lot is less than six thousand square feet. If the lot is greater than six thousand square feet, you can require up to two stalls. A city may establish a roof height of not less than twenty-four feet. So that would be for the detached ADU and up to the height limitation within the zoning code for the principal unit. Impact fees are going to be limited to fifty percent of the principal unit, and we're actually going to address that through our updated fee resolution, so we took that portion out of the policy altogether. We are not able to require street improvements. And we cannot impose aesthetic standards or requirements for design review that are more restrictive than the principal unit. That one's been challenging for communities. I think, you know, there have been communities that probably wanted a little bit more privacy between, you know, between a neighbor and a neighbor. And cities may not impose setback requirements, yard coverage limits, tree retention mandates, or restrictions on entry door location. So those were really what our bumpers were as we were going through the policy update. Next slide. So this is just kind of a refresher, since we're in the public hearing, and so you'll recognize these from a previous council meeting, and this is what we also provided to our community during the open house and on our website and through our social media blitz. And so on the left, you have examples of some existing ADUs. And then on the right, this is essentially our FAQ that said what our current code was and what the update was proposed at that time, and then frequently asked questions. Next slide. So this is the work that we went back and did after Planning Commission and Council discussion over the last six weeks. And so this is an example of ADUs within our community, what the height is to eve, and then the height to the roof peak, and what type of ADU it is, whether it's detached or attached, and even above garage. Next slide. This is just a, you know, a little bit about what our meetings are doing. Not all communities have actually passed their legislation yet. Some of them are still either Planning Commission Counselor at hearing. So Monroe had the height of an underlying zone, but as you'll see in a couple of slides, they actually calculate height a little bit differently. So it's, it's not an apple to an apple. It's really an apple to a bear and an orange all at the same time. Carnation pretty much chose the same height of the underlying zone. North Bend took a little bit different approach. But you can see for the most part, most of them took the existing underlying zone approach. Slide. And so I did want to just provide an example of what other cities. So Monroe, pretty standard to Woodinville, so you can see they take, if it's a pitched roof, they take average midpoint elevation. So in general, it's never from the top of the roof. And I think that's what was challenging about the legislation is that I don't, I'm not sure that they knew what cities do sometimes and how they measure. And there are cities like us that, you know, that look going towards the eve. But as discussed earlier, we're going to be looking at that this year with our code amendments, and you can see on the flat roof, it's based on their average grade, their maximum height. Carnation, you know, has a more historical approach when you look at kind of the middle one, which is the barn, the barn one. But for the most part, it's pretty similar to Monroe, and then Woodinville is also fairly similar to Monroe. So now let's talk about what our policy says. So if the checkmark is there, it's because it's now in the draft policy. So we're going to allow up to two ADUs per parcel. We're going to allow them in all of our zones and allow for single family. We're going to keep the limit at the state minimum of a thousand square feet. We've included the owner occupancy requirement. We also added the sale of an ADU will be allowed. We did add that a minimum of one parking space is required for ADU. This was the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Attached ADU shall be limited to twenty-four feet as measured to the eve, and that also is a Planning Commission recommendation. An attached ADU shall be limited to the height within the zoning code, so that's the principal unit. Impact fees obviously will be limited to fifty percent of the principal unit, and that will be adopted with our city fee resolution. We didn't have street improvements were required, so we didn't have to review the policies for that. Cities may not impose additional aesthetic or design requirements from, that, that aren't applicable to, under the underlying zone of the principal unit. So we did not have any additional standards. And we also did not add any additional standards for setbacks regarding coverage limits, restrictions on entry door location, or additional tree limitation mandates. We did update our zoning sections for definitions for ADU, attached, detached, dwelling, single-family, attached, principal dwelling unit, floor area gross residential and commercial and floor area ratio. We did that to be more consistent with building code. So we completed the updates of those sections, which is basically fourteen point one, two through eighteen. Next slide. So what are the next steps? We're going to take public testimony at the public hearing. Staff will prepare a final policy for Planning Commission recommendation post-hearing and discussion. So last week, they held their public hearing, had a really nice, relaxed conversation. And so at this point, they're going to move the legislation forward that was included in the hearing packet. And they're scheduled for recommendations to City Council on May twenty-eighth. And that will allow council to have a discussion at the June third meeting, and if they're prepared, they can make a decision that evening. But if they have additional modifications, then we would bring them back. Meaning that is the final date that we're going to adopt in the our statutory deadline.
Thank you. We do not have anybody signed up for public comment on this one, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And I will open the public hearing on the Development Agreement Amendment for Duval Village. And once again, this presentation will be by Laura Thomas, our Community Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. Director Laura Thomas. And this evening, we'll be talking about Development Agreement Amendment One. And in just a minute, we'll have a presentation up. So Planning Commission has had their hearing last, their last meeting, and recommended council approve the Development Agreement Amendment One. So this agreement would only be between the city of Duval and JSGP Ventures. The illustration is an illustration of their project that's in current site plan, site plan review and design review. Next slide. So just some basics. As staff, we realized that there were not a lot of planning commissioners and council members that still had the legacy of this project. And even for everyone in this room, there's legacy that goes back in history, back into the nineties. Though Steve and I were still young at that time. So parcel, parcel C one. You're still young. You were young at that time. Parcel C one is the parcel that we are talking about, so where you see those stars. That's the parcel we're looking at. The image up in the middle is actually from the early nineties, which is right about the time that it was annexed into the city. It was actually used agriculturally at that time. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see that's just from the King County IMAP and the parcel there, and then I took a snapshot out of the site plan as well, so you could see it a little bit more blown up. It is zoned mixed-use twelve. The parcel size is about one point four five acres, and it's one lot from the Duval Village subdivision. Next slide. Again, you can see there's a lot of history. Historically, it was called the Thayer Barn Site, and the parcel was annexed in nineteen ninety-five, and there were agreements going back that far for what the community was hopeful to get out of that parcel. Mixed-use project was envisioned and applied for in nineteen ninety-nine. It had over two hundred residential units with commercial development, so obviously, that project has substantially changed from that period of time. And there was an actual settlement agreement at that time between the city and the owner. The city deemed the application complete and then took it away. And so we went through litigation. The site was sold to Westcott Home several years ago from the original New Hall Jones, everything built from the original owner. And Westcott Home subdivided into ninety-nine units and commercial lots. The original, I should say, the existing development agreement, because it has not yet expired, was, it includes A to B communities, which Westcott sold to AHB Communities. And then the DFA and JSGP Ventures, which owns the commercial C one lot in the city of Duval. The development agreement was approved in two thousand and fifteen. The new owner purchased their lot in twenty twenty-one, you know, kind of when we were still going through the pandemic. And they wanted to do a development of the building, essentially for the use of, you know, more of a mixed use, but it was set for a dentist, and that's one of the reasons why he purchased it. C one came in for pre-application in twenty twenty. Uh, block C one came in for pre-application in twenty twenty three. The city applicant worked through all the detailed design, parking, et cetera. When the project first came in, um, it, uh, was, you know, was a little bit smaller and it didn't have as much mixed use component. And they came back um, and brought in some residential uses that are fair, you know, they're fairly small unit. So something that we don't, um, historically get and that we, we don't have currently, which is, you know, one and two bedroom, um, units. Uh, in early twenty five, the applicant submitted new application and included commercial and residential uses. Next slide. So why are we here? Because development agreement is set to expire in about a month. We thought we were going to get through, you know, hearing ceremony or before, but but I always think a little bit longer, but, um, you know, fairly large project together, especially, you know, when, you know, you haven't developed before. You know, this is not a toll rush project. This is a local property manager. But, um, the amendment agreement would be between just, uh, JSGP and the city. Um, I was in contact with DFA and H V actually quite a bit over the last several weeks. And DFA is like, hey, can you keep us out of it? We don't need to be part of the development agreement. So, um, we we wanted to move on. HB, they didn't really have an opinion when we were done. And I'm like, it's easier if it's just between the city and the existing property of it. Next slide. So, um, in your packet, you'll see the terms of the development agreement. Staff worked with our city attorney on drafting this agreement with the applicant. Um, we, we give, um, extension for three years. Initially, staff had proposed to the applicant came back and, you know, requested, you know, one additional year. So we did redraft it for the additional year. Um, it will remain up to, to two thousand and fifteen development regulations. That's what the existing agreement has. And then also to two thousand and fifteen fee. So that would be sewer, water parks, um, and transportation. And that's about a four hundred thousand dollar cost, cost savings. Uh, next slide. Uh, so again, initially we started out with a two-year extension and we agreed to that with some conditions as a draft for in theater. So we said, okay, if we're going to go a little bit further, then we want to make sure that we get a progress report about every sixty days. I would put in as a written report to planning commission and council. Um, and then the owner shall apply for a building permit within ninety days of the notice of decision. So that'll be this summer and that'll give them about ninety days to finish up their engineering drawings. And then that the owner shall pick up a building permit within eighteen months of the approval of the development agreement and then moving up to the timelines, it'll get them finished in about three years. Slide. So next step, we're going to the public hearing. We're going to take public testimony, close the hearing and then, uh, further on, we have it scheduled under, um, new business for discussion and decision. Um, you have this meeting that you can make a decision if you're ready or we can make it as late as six two. Um, the applicant is also here and will be called on room terms.
All right. Uh, we do have two individuals signed up for, actually companies, um, signed up for public comment. First, we have and I apologize, Mr. Singh. I cannot, um, read out, uh, your first name.
Awesome. I'm Paul.
Paul, um, excellent. Paul Singh, uh, from JSP Ventures. Uh, you're welcome to participate and you'll have fun with this.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, members of the city council. I'm Dr. Permando Paul Singh, managing member of JSGP Ventures LLC, which owns Lot C one Duval relation. I'm here today to request a three-year extension uh, of the development agreement for Lot C one. As you are aware, the, uh, current economic climate is challenging utilizing construction, construction costs, interest rates and market volatility. Uh, these factors have impacted our project's timeline and financial visibility. Um, by these challenges, we are committed to completing the project. Um, it's very important, um, for us uh, that the resting of our fees at twenty fifteen rate is crucial in ensuring the project, uh, financial, uh, viability and allowing us to move forward. Uh, the extension will enable us to navigate that current economic uncertainty, adjust our project timeline and budget accordingly. Uh, when the project is complete jobs, it will create jobs and stimulate, uh, local economy. Uh, we have made significant progress, including, uh, securing, uh, preleases for the, uh, commercial portion of the building. Uh, completing the design review process, uh, preparing for construction to begin soon. Uh, we believe this extension is essential, uh, for the project's success. And we are committed to working closely with the city, uh, to ensure its timely completion. And I appreciate, um, uh, for considering our course. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Gareth Denny from Gareth Denny Architecture.
Um, I would not, don't really have anything prepared to say tonight.
Okay, um, then we will.
Yeah.
No. Thank you. Uh, and with that then, we will close the public hearing and move on to our third public hearing for our park impact fee, uh, with, uh, Larissa Grandella, our city engineer. So with that, the public hearing for the park impact fee, so.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Council, staff and citizens. Steve Wineszewski, sorry to disappoint you. That's a conference, so. You're a lucky day. All right. So we were just providing the park impact E public here relative to the recent path of the park trails and open space plan. So let's go ahead and go next slide. Uh, well, history, we did contact with FCS, a booming company, which has been bought. So it's used to the FCS group. Same group of folks who have done lots of work in region for the last twenty five years. Uh, we did adopt the twenty twenty four park trail open space plan in January, which also at that time included updated twenty year CAP project list. And we have discussed this at the council meeting in February and in May. Next slide. There is your list of approximately seventy million dollars in projects, of which about fifty million, a little more are both related and impact fee eligible. Uh, next slide. That is the map that they provided that identify the parks. And, uh, on the CFP list. And then the next slide is the trails on the list. Next slide. So the funding of the plan, seventy two point two million total project costs, those are twenty twenty four dollars. Started this last year. Uh, it has to be in the department that the eligible project. So growth related, our part of the seventy two point two million is fifty point nine. Uh, we have assumed the financial structure for paying for project work, uh, about ten percent grants. Seven point two million, other city funding of fourteen million and the number, the denominator is forty five sixty five, or they're about residential equivalent. Uh, next slide. We have con- concluded and are providing a non-residential park fee component. So there is a, a small portion, it is about one point two percent of the numerator, the denominator math relative to, um, non-residential activities in the parks and trail system. So that is a new and eligible, um, part of the fee calculation. So the math provides for one thousand, two dollars and sixteen cents per thousand square feet of commercial or non-residential space. Uh, again, at the time of this decree, we still are recommending only fifty percent of the often implemented for five hundred one dollar eight cents per dollars per foot. Um, and these will be calculated in the, uh, type of application in their deck. Next slide. Residential component. Um, this is, the timing of this is very well done as it is essentially in conjunction with all the comprehensive work, all the comprehensive planning the city's doing. So all the numbers are matched up, uh, average dwelling unit size, twenty one sixty three square feet, average, uh, average occupancy per dwelling, three point oh eight. Um, average occupancy of thousand square feet is more math than one point four three. I'm not sure that that's there, but, um, so we come up with a park impact fee per square foot. It is fifteen dollars and ninety two cents. That'd be a hundred percent rate. Now, we do have a cap on size of a minimum square footage and maximum square footage to be assessed in residential, uh, construction. So the two components are seven hundred two and then three thousand one hundred twenty four respectively. Um, and ADUs are part of this, uh, but they are capped at fifty percent of the principal dwelling unit, uh, total for max. Um, next slide is the residential component recommended, which is half, again, fifty percent of the calculated fee. So the bottom line is seven dollars and ninety six cents per square foot. Next slide. Uh, the recommendation for the fifty percent, uh, the fee to be adopted, it's in line with our previous methodologies and adoptions, twenty oh eight through now. Uh, we can still accomplish the project goal projected over the next ten years. Uh, these would be non-residential, five hundred one dollar eight cents per thousand square foot of non-residential space. Seven dollars ninety six cents per square foot of residential components. Uh, there's a minimum max and square footage for residential calculations and ADUs capped at fifty percent of the principal dwelling unit. All right. Next slide. That's it. I want to say a comment.
We, we do not have anyone signed up for public hearing. So with that, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, we'll move on to existing business and, uh, first up is in Hannibal twenty five dash two seven for park impact fees for discussion and decision. Um, would counsel, would anyone in council like to make a motion? It looks like Councilor Riffel was pulling up the language.
Yes, yes. Here are many pages. So, um, yeah, I'll make the motion to move. I moved with the end of twenty five oh seven for the adoption of ordinance thirteen thirty four to approve user twenty far, one twenty five parking lot to us presenting.
Is there a second? Second. All right. Any discussion? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I saw the, um, the four thousand five hundred sixty three residential one. I was like, my goodness, that's a lot of homes. But then I thought maybe that's resident. Is it actual homes being, or we know?
It's a residential, we call it a residential equivalent. So it is a combination of the homes and the amassing of the component for non-commercial, or non-residential or commercial care for use of the park space. And.
Okay, cause I, um, if on slide twelve, uh, that's in the packet, it was from FCS, I believe.
It's four, five, seven, one.
Okay.
Forty five, seventy one, that's the number.
Uh.
Next slide.
Well. Slide twelve.
Slide twelve.
Right, that's in the packet, page twenty four.
Mm-hmm. One page short.
They're issued documents in the packet. One was associated with public hearing, the other was with the.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so on that one, it sort of looks like the four thousand five hundred sixty five is based on population. Not units of housing.
Correct.
Okay. So we aren't expecting there to be four thousand five hundred sixty five units of house.
No, it's, if we went to a square footage cost instead of flat fee or per bedroom cost, that is the aggregated amount of people relative to the units.
Got it. So more resident.
Yes.
Actual residential unit. Okay, I started to think that we really have to look at to expect us to build four thousand five hundred sixty five units. And so anyway, I just wanted to clarify that, that, um, in order to receive that much, not the expected amount, we don't have to build that many. We really have to build about third of that to get the expected fifty percent, something like that, but about three people per unit. Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how many houses will be built to collect the amount of money to fund the project? At fifty percent of the growth portion of the project.
Thank you, Derek Tominechewski. Uh, councilmember symbol?
Yeah, I think the last slide had the, a statement that fifty percent would fully fund all the values over the next ten years. Is that right?
The statement is that with the amount of revenue that would come in at the fifty percent rate, based on the projects on the list in the ten year period and what we can do in ten years would be sufficient. Cause if you go past ten years, you, and you don't spend the money, you give it back, right? So you did argue it all came in, we wouldn't have necessarily the ability to build it all, right? We still have so many people to do the work, other projects, sewer, water, street, storm, facilities, not just parks. So there's a balance there. But yes, that was the assessment that would, it would, it would match the rate we couldn't achieve.
All right. Well, I'm, I'm good with it.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Olin.
Uh, one question first. Thank you for everything you did, the, the questions that you answered in this updated presentation. I really appreciate it. There's a lot of clarification there. Um, in the fifty-six page packet document, I just, one question clarification. So on page forty five, it says the, the big project list has an eligible cost of fifty million dollars, fifty point four. Couple pages later, it says on the scenarios, page forty nine, it says for full implementation, we need about fifty million dollars. Is that accurate?
Full implementation. Forty nine, it's the top.
Yeah, in, in the scenarios.
Yeah.
Is that full implementation at at fifty percent?
Yeah, and there's a buy-in component to get you to that fifty million point nine-ish on top of the forty. So forty nine, the number on this call.
Yeah.
Row here. There's another component of eligibility of expenses that isn't on the revenue or the, the related part of this on new growth. There's some buy-in from other projects. I'll hear the slide for that.
Existing. There's the cost basis on slide forty three.
Hmm, so there's some existing facilities to buy, kind of buy, buy back on excess that we have.
Help me understand, Andrew.
Yeah, so. There is a, there is a mathematical slide in here. But I don't know, associated more clearly.
I guess it's simplified. Ultimately, what my question is, is if, if I know it's forty nine, if full implementation, which yields approximate estimated revenue of forty nine million dollars, if that is based on the fifty percent PIF, I'm good. If that represents a hundred percent, then I see a giant short ball and I don't understand why we're doing that.
So. Part of that is timing of install, these are today's numbers, right? So every year that goes by in the ten year period, we do have an increasing cost that goes into the annual fee. So our, our CIP, uh, our, this is an impact here. In fact, these are indexed by a calculation to try to keep up with current cost. So that's part of, that's not reflecting. So that's part of, that's not reflected in the math, so there's, there's fifty million there. It's gonna be pushed out over a ten year period. This is a more than ten year plan, right, so. We won't collect all the fifty in the ten year period, we won't do fifty million, we've got fifty million dollars of projects in the ten year period. But at this rate, the grant that will come in, other resources that we may find. We will be able to do the work. That we can get done in a ten year period, which doesn't fund the whole plan.
Right, right.
So to fund the whole plan at a hundred percent, realistically, wouldn't, it would make it very difficult to do all the work if we. Had more money than we needed in that sense.
We're we're charging with two rack.
So the rate we, like, the rate we have done since two thousand and eight, about the half collected rate. Has marched us along, we're still borrowing, like, we borrowed from Big Rock, but we've gotten projects done on the list and. It, it's, it's not quite fuzzy math, it is sensible math on the reality of actual construction and implementation.
Any other questions or discussion? Uh we've heard from you already, councilmember Nappland, so I'm gonna go to the rest of council first, um mayor pretend Mercer, and then councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, more just a comment, I mean, I I think I'm I'm. Looked through the approach, we've just sort of discussed in last meeting, uh the the piece I sort of wanna just. Reemphasize or or clarify with. Director Lenishewski is, and and I think the key call out that you just made is, it's also. It's trying to match the inflow of revenue. Based on the best available math and not knowing the specific inflow of projects. With the capacity of staff to execute those projects, and that's kind of how I'm viewing it, it's the defining sort of the sweet spot in the middle. So if we collected, you know, additional revenue, we don't necessarily, we couldn't uh. Design, approve, and build out those projects in that period of time, so you know, in in that, when I think of it that way, for me. This is sort of like a good. Middle of the road a a approach, I mean, obviously, we could charge more, but. Then we're bringing in excess funds in terms of what we potentially could execute and. And we also might end up with fewer projects but bigger projects, so it doesn't necessarily. Reflect development, you could get bigger homes or bigger projects versus sort of smaller. Projects in terms of this, this sort of, this mix based on the the projected population growth, so. Um more, again, just a comment, um but if you could just clarify for me, sort of Director Lenishewski, that's the right. Way to think about this, and then if if that is the case, I'm I'm fine moving forward with the proposal.
Yeah, I would agree that is the rough. Explanation of how we handle fees of this nature in the city and have.
Uh councilmember Schaefer?
First of all, I very dislike this square footage uh approach, I think that makes makes more sense and it's more, you know, more fair to everyone. Uh all around, uh I still take issue with fifty percent, even though I've, you know, I've heard, certainly heard all the comments, and I understand. You know, having, you know, maybe not having enough staff to spend uh. More more money, although I'm I'm actually not convinced of that. Uh I think we should consider something, oh, by the way, so fifty percent of the of the uh. Maximum means that ADUs will actually be paying only twenty five percent. Of the maximum, such as fifty percent and fifty percent, and developers will absolutely love that. They're already getting a break with the with the development fees. Uh on ADUs, and believe me, they will take full advantage of that in the, in the. But. Getting back to the, actually, just the fifty percent, uh why don't we consider something a bit more, sixty percent? The worst that's gonna happen to us is we're gonna have to give some money back, yeah, I'll have to give it back with interest, but you know. Supposedly in that period of time, we'll make some interest on it as well, so it's a wash to the city. So I propose a.
Motion. Are you still proposing an amendment?
I'm adding, thank you. I propose an amendment to make the fifty percent actually sixty percent.
Second. Discussion? Um councilmember Nappland?
Yeah, I keep thinking about this, and I know our average square footage is about twenty one, twenty two hundred square feet. But if you look at the remaining land. And you look at some of the projects that are coming, I think we have smaller units coming, if you, you know, just for the. That is coming forward, um it's in the packet, now those are, you know, set to two thousand. Fifteen, uh they have to be, so that one in particular, but fly here, but. Those type of projects are what we're thinking we might start seeing smaller units, and. With that said, um I think we'll be bringing in potentially less money than we're anticipating. Because the units are smaller, there was, you just don't have um. The land that, yeah, somebody, so more units. So um. Yeah, I feel much more comfortable with fifty percent, I don't think we have any risk of giving any money back. Um Big Rock all feel expansion alone, I think it's in here at. Eight million dollars, um that's a lot of fees just to get enough for that project, so I I just think the risk is basically zero. Um on having to give money back. Uh so I'm in full support of at least the sixty percent.
Councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, I guess for me, I'm not, I haven't been hearing from staff that lack of. Like not collecting enough money is the roadblock, to me, I've been hearing words at times that staffing in the ten year period, you get a certain amount done. Um if I was hearing the other, I think they'd probably be recommending a higher percentage, um so I guess that's my comment, my question would be. If council decides to vote a higher percentage, what does that look like in terms of steps staff would need to take, um? I imagine some kind of reshuffling or reevaluating, like, what what would happen if we did that, what what would workload be for you all on the back end?
Um I'll let Director Lenishewski out that language, also on uh the potential legal risk of doing so as well.
So uh just a quick note too on some of the, again. These are all best available estimates, not only for, you know, project costs, that the community derive. But growth-related units, right? So um not to present against the great thing, but. The gentleman in the room to talk about development agreement are bringing in twenty four apartment or condo units on top of infrastructure. And we had zero planning uh and expectation of occurring. So things do come over time on an average that we can never control. But they. And there are words for this in planning world, but. The law of averages seems to come no matter what we do, so. Uh not for or against, but I think the variety of units comes when the opportunity and and the community. Needs it in the sense of uh supply chain. Um that said, to change the numbers around, um that that simple math. Uh that's a number, you know, an example of the cost difference on a twenty, the average home, which is two thousand one hundred sixty three square feet. That will bring in the twenty thousand six hundred fifty six dollars for that unit. Instead of the fifty percent rate of seventeen thousand two seventeen. So that's the physical numbers of difference, um. Again, we all participated as a community and and parts of the space plan, right? We get, oh, we we tried to manage what we want, then we are just here to try to provide a. Rate at which we could hopefully succeed on all sides and aspects, so. There's all new growth related stuff, that is not anything we can do on existing facilities. Um and then we don't forget the meter pace, we still have to maintain it, and that's not always a given on cost.
Thank you, and the city administrator now had a response?
Um yeah, it's not necessarily a response, but just a reminder that in ten years, we will, we are required to come back to council. To talk about the list and the rate again, because we are required to do an update, but also. Uh choosing today, whatever rate you all decide, um doesn't mean that that is the rate. For the next ten years, you can always come back, if we're slowing down, or not seeing the projections that you want. You can amend that rate again. You know, within legally defensible, you know, ranges, but just a reminder that. A decision today does not lock you into twenty years, thirty years, there are either required. Uh going through time where you have to reassess this, but also council can ask to reassess it.
Any other questions or comments on this amendment? You you have not done one on this, you just proposed a motion, so you need to do a comment, and then I do have one final comment before we do the.
Okay, uh good, so again, I don't see a downside uh to this, I'm not asking for any changes, you know, or expecting any changes in staff. I'm simply asking that we uh up this from fifty percent to sixty percent. Worse comes to worse, we give back the money, uh I don't see any harm, um. And mayor, I know you're gonna talk about legal risk, uh. Yeah, there's always a legal risk, but I think this council owes our constituents constituents a bit more. We have to be at least a little bit bold, we can't always hang back on everything. Because there might be a a lawsuit or litigation related to it, uh. That that's, that's a risk we take with everything we do. And uh you know, frankly, with the change from fifty percent to sixty percent, yet developers won't like it, uh. May, will they sue us, maybe, will it be successful, uh probably not. Uh because that's well within our jurisdiction, not the developer's jurisdiction. That's it.
Thank you, um so my comment actually um is a combination of things, uh one of which is um to remind the body. That we have a big general fund issue, um of revenue coming at us, um we started to dip into some of our savings to fund basic services. And a key reminder that all of our parks and trails are maintained by our parks maintenance folks. Who are general fund funded, and we don't even have enough money at this point for our officers. And even with our municipal financial plan. We do not have um a plan or revenues in place to support the parks maintenance necessary at this stage. To add fifty million dollars of development in the next ten years and maintain it, let alone. The, you know, from the staffing side, let alone um. You know, updating and fixing equipment that we already have. So um so I I say that uh in that we we do need to do the impact fees, we want to improve the plan, but as it stands today. There is not going to be enough general fund to support the operations and maintenance of parks absent additional revenue. Um this council is having discussions about levies to simply. Replace turf um at Big Rock, um when that. Park was built, that was a big part of the commitment, is that we would have to go out to the voters on a regular basis to support. The continued maintenance and operations with Big Rock Park and Big Rock Golf Field. Um this, um. You know, there also a component, if you go above that rate and you have to get to put that money back. Staff has to track down all of the developers over the previous ten years and identify how much they owe each of them back. Some of those developers may have gone out of business, so then there is a significant amount of effort and time and staff time. And potentially legal costs tracking down those developers as well to provide that money back. Um so it's not just, um you know, there's, there is a legal risk, and um that is important as well. But also is important is making sure that there are wise fiscal decisions and recommendations for the city moving forward and making sure. That we're not getting out over our ski tips. Um on these things and expecting that we're going to be able to use that money somehow. When there already are going to be significant conversations over the next several years about how we even just have support the staffing to maintain the facilities. So with that, does anybody that has not spoken in the amendment have anything else to speak to? Great, staying on, um we'll go roll call vote on the amendments, um. So clerk, will you please uh take the roll call vote? Okay, uh mayor pretend Mercer?
Uh nay.
Uh Mr. Olin?
Nay.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yea.
Uh Ms. McHenry?
Name.
Mr. Supple?
No.
Uh Ms. Nappland?
Yeah.
Ms. Kufel?
Nay.
Motion fails, all right, um now let's go ahead and take a vote on the, on the underlying, the original bill presented, since the amendment failed. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Abstentions?
I I I don't understand, so I I, but I didn't mean to abstain, abstain, I feel.
Well, we just need a.
Okay, no.
No, okay, great, um thank you, all right, and we'll move on to our last agenda bill this evening, agenda bill twenty five dash twenty three, the development agreement. Amendment for Devol Village for uh discussion. Um so we've heard the presentation from uh our staff uh in public hearing on this, does council have any questions or comments? Uh since this will be, well, actually, we can't take a vote tonight, or you can wait until the next meeting, Jane. Um if you, if anyone does want to take a vote tonight, I recommend making a motion uh now. Before discussion start.
I have to recommend approval of the proposed amendment one to the development in the city of Duvall and. Name J S G P Ventures LLC is conditioned in exhibit one of the public hearing staff report.
Any discussion? Councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, I think one of the things I was hoping, um sometimes when things things get vested to older stuff, you have the high. Level understanding of the difference, mostly not so much the fees, you mentioned the delta there. But the um development regulations, I I know everything would have to be up to the current, like, well, C T stuff, but. In terms of development regulations, is there any high level understanding of any big jump out differences between twenty fifteen and now?
Not currently existing, they're pretty much the same across the board.
Thank you, that helps a lot.
Thank you.
Councilmember Supple?
So this property has been sitting there for twenty, twenty five years without any development. I think even even at twenty fifteen rates, I think it's time to just. Fight the ball and get something started on.
Councilmember Schaefer and then Nappland?
Uh yeah, let's remind ourselves, it's also been sitting there since, was twenty twenty one with Kernboner? Uh where and nothing has happened in that period of time, uh. I heard a comment about economic uh challenges. There certainly has been in the last few years, there will continue to be economic challenges in the next three years. Uh and beyond that, uh as well, things aren't gonna get any cheaper, uh my big issue with this. Is the uh the two twenty fifteen uh fee rates that we're giving the developer. This is costing our taxpayers money, uh four hundred thousand dollars, uh. We're we're essentially giving to this developer to do their thing, are we gonna give future commercial developments? Uh like amounts to build here in Duvall, uh I suspect not, and I see no reason to give. This particular developer those reduced fee rates, I think we're. I I think this is absolutely wrong thing to do, I think it's unfair to other commercial developments coming to. To uh Duvall, or they're gonna ask for similar things, and our taxpayers are helping to pay for this development. That is absolutely the wrong thing uh for us to do. Uh I would be in favor of an extension, but not with the twenty fifteen fees. I'd be only be in favor of an extension with the twenty twenty five, uh these are current groups. Uh if that would even be accessible to to the developer, but let's not hand them money, let's not have our taxpayers. Paying them to develop their commercial property here, that is not correct.
Councilmember Nappland and then mayor pretend Mercer?
Yeah, I I, I mean, I have similar thoughts, um about. Uh honoring ten year old fees, we all know what inflation has done. Um in that time period, we've had the delay projects, we haven't had money to do projects. And um yeah, it's, I I'm not a hundred percent sure how we could. Change that or what options we have, but I would be curious um from staff, what options we would have to. Potentially adjust for that, and then really more overarching. What fees do we have in these agreements, um it seems like. We make agreements, and then the agreements aren't meet, and we make extensions, and we do more things, because every time we extend it. We're once again giving three more years of not capturing inflation on. The fees, I mean, these are, these are things that the community is going to have to pay for. Um so we'll have to make up the money, the existing residents will have to make up the money. Um so anyway, I I would like to understand, maybe, I don't know if legal is. Uh, so anyway, I I would like to understand, maybe, I don't know if legal is here, but what teeth do we have? I mean, I, we've given extensions and I thought we'd already given an extension. Um, and here we are, yeah. Um, yeah.
City Attorney Ray, I'll turn it over to you to answer that question before we go to Mayor Pretend.
Yeah, the the whole idea of a development agreement is premised on the city's belief that the project will uh provide community benefit. And this is an area where the city council has discretion in terms of what it wants to do in terms of approving an extension or or not. And so um, there's the the, it's not really a question of teeth from my standpoint. It's a question of, is this development something that the city wants and is it willing to um to lock in the applicable fees at the two thousand fifteen rate um as opposed to um what it is, what it is currently? But there's not a lot of legal constraints on the council on this question. It's something that the council can um has latitude to decide whether whether it wants to to grant the extension or not.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Pretend Mercer?
Yeah, my my comments sort of, you know, are gonna align. I I think the comments made earlier about, you know, not anyone sort of being part of, I obviously haven't been back to ninety, but on the planning commission, I've very familiar with this project, the previous MOUs. I think as councilmember Napland alluded, I I swore that we did an extension for West Cod and a previous iteration of this. That was a one-year extension and sort of we're revisiting this now. Um, I think my biggest concern is as a city, we've often decoupled these projects that have a commercial component and a residential component, and we've done something similar for Toll Brothers and others where rather than holding them to the original terms of the agreement where they build both in tandem, we've acknowledged the the economic conditions and allowed them to decouple them. And then we get into the state where we we get the, it it changes hands and it resets. Um, I think that is my biggest concern. Obviously, the 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 questions around recession and uncertainty are still front and center, and I don't see them sort of resolving in the next X number of, you know, months. Um, I think the one piece or the question I'd have for for staff uh is yes, obviously, you know, the 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 project looks like it sort of meets a lot of the standards we wanted for community. It's a mixed-use development. There is pre-lease agreements, it sounds like already in place. Um, you know, it does execute on sort of the broader vision for that, for that parcel. I think where I get concerned is with the request around a three, from a two to a three-year extension, sort of even beyond what the initial ask is, there is no motivation in my mind, even if there's a little bit of risk for the developer to move forward with the project. They could kick the can down the road to year two, end of two-year-two, and then run up against the time trying to get the the project completed in the last year, or if we have any type of recession, that could easily stretch into to two years. And then we've essentially gotten sort of nothing out of the deal. So I think my my broader question was really around, there's nothing around in a a start date. There is the sixty-day checkpoint, um, which really is just a progress report. We've done those in the past. They haven't been particularly effective in terms of moving projects forward, just letting us know that they're not moving forward. I I guess that would be my one question to Director Thomas, if there was uh, and apologies, cuz I missed the first discussion in the cow. Um, you know, is there an expectation that this will come in for final review? I think you said you thought it would already land and that it had been pushed out a little bit. I mean, I would feel more comfortable if if there is language in the MOU about essentially a clock starting once a certain milestone had been crossed. But the degree of confidence we have around that next step coming in, you know, are we two months away from that? Are we very close? If there's pre-lease agreements already signed, it sounds like it's pretty close. But I would feel better about approving this if I had certainty that, you know, we crossed the Rubicon and the project is scheduled to start. And then once, obviously, there's there's sort of um, you know, a stake in the in the in the development, it it has a way of naturally moving forward. So apologies, that was a little long-winded, but but that's really where I'm sort of sitting at the moment, looking at this over a con continuum of time and knowing we've been here multiple times in the past. I would feel better if I knew there was something on the the near horizon that would kickstart the process and then I'm okay with the extension to wrap it up. But right now, it sounds like even that starting is a little little questionable.
Director Thomas?
Uh, so uh, can the clerk share the slide presentation again? And this is in the in the presentation from the hearing and in your staff report and is a recommended condition. Obviously, we start out with a two-year extension. I will say that when it was purchased in twenty-one, we were in a pandemic. And he and the owner did come in, come through pre-application, went through a process, has redesigned it on several occasions. In twenty twenty-five, this year in January, they brought in an updated project. It is gonna be going to Planning Commission and Hearing in July and August. We conditioned it so that there are actually triggers before the end of that term. And I would not be coming back to you again for an extension. Unfortunately, our mixed-use policies allow this to continue to occur. That policy needs to be updated. This isn't something that we're seeking as as a staff member. This is a policy that we have, but what we did besides the sixty-day update is we have said the owner shall apply for a building permit within ninety days at the notice of decision of hearing. So that's gonna be in August, and then now trigger that ninety days. And then we also say that the owner has to pick up a building permit within eighteen months of the approval of the development agreement. So that this project can be completed in the term of that agreement.
Uh, city administrator.
Thank you, thank you. Apologies uh for, I've been sort of offline the last couple of days, so uh, I apologize, I glanced over that.
We we understand, Mayor Pretend. It was a good question and good to have the clarity uh publicly. Uh, city administrator right now?
I I think the question to Director Thomas is um, or help. So if the building permit isn't picked up, if these deadlines are not met, does the development agreement essentially fail on its own terms and the twenty twenty-five rates then apply? I think that's the question that council wants to get to.
So when the development, if the development agreement expires in the three years, you know, we're done?
Uh, uh, so my question's a little different. My question is if a condition fails, do the twenty twenty-five rates become effective?
If the project falls apart before the end of the term of three years, yes.
My question's still a little different. My question is, if a condition fails, so they don't pick up a building permit in eighteen months, will the twenty twenty-five rates apply?
No.
Now, is it, uh, I'll ask a question for uh our city attorney, um, Oscar. If uh, would council be able to make a proposed amendment to this to have, if that building permit is not picked up in eighteen months, that the twenty twenty-five rates would then apply?
Um, I think that that could be um, an appropriate amendment to the um, to the amendment to the development agreement. Um, it could, we could definitely um, uh, put that uh, put that in place. And 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 I think my I think the the council could either decide that tonight, or we could craft the appropriate language and then come back. Um, assuming we have another meeting where we can still come back from a timing standpoint um, with um, with that, with that new language um, uh, in the development agreement.
Sounds like that would address the council's concerns. Um, city administrator.
And we do have time. We have one more meeting, June third, where we can consider a revised development agreement.
So we do have a motion and a second on the table. Um, hold on, hold on, please. Um, we have a motion on the second on the table. Uh, so um, if council would like to move this to the next meeting so that it can be amended, um, we would need a motion for that um to, I don't think it's table. Um, we don't do this very often. It would be table until the next meeting?
Yes.
Um, but uh, before we get to that, um, I just wanna ask, are there any, are there any council members that would disagree with that amendment? Councilmember Schaefer?
Uh, again, uh, I would disagree with that amendment because we're asking our taxpayers to contribute to this commercial develop. Uh, why would we do that? I mean, can you face your constituents and tell tell them, hey, your family gave this development two months?
Councilmember Schaefer, I'm gonna ask you not to um, not to sign motive or make accusations against councilmembers about facing voters.
I'm not making accusations. It was a question. Uh, and you face your constituents with that in mind. That's not an accusation.
It's still inappropriate for this meeting, so if we can keep it to the question at hand again.
The city?
Point of order. Point is well taken. Councilmember Schaefer was out of line, and I'm trying to get this back to the topic of the discussion. We should not be asking councilmembers about facing their voters and the constituents based on decisions.
Okay, I'm not gonna, but it's, it is wrong to ask our constituents to contribute to this developers' commercial development. Uh, we should not be doing that. We should update this to twenty twenty-five fees. And since nothing has happened since twenty twenty-one uh on this, uh, there's certainly been no progress, no breaking ground, no, you know, not except a few drawings that I've that I've seen. Uh, I believe that's the wrong thing to do. Before we give them twenty fifteen rates, ask yourself why? Why do we wanna do that?
Thank you. So that, um, so do we have any more comments on tabling the motion? Or anyone that objects to coming back with the amendment? Cuz this is now, if we table it, this is not gonna be up for decision this evening, and tabling it means discussion stops. Staff comes back and drafts an amendment, and the discussion continues there. Councilmember Napland?
So I'll go back to my question before. The original contract, the development agreement, was that they would have it built in a month? Or that they would have the building permit? That is not happening. What my question was, is what teeth do we have? Because the the concept of this development agreement wasn't to create some kind of carrot by vesting the um, the fees. The the concept was, and and councilmember Mercer, Mayor Pretend Mercer touched on it, was that you have the residential and the commercial built out together. That's the idea. Because the commercial um helps make the residential financially viable for the city in terms of what that brings to the city and revenue. And for the developer, uh, the housing, because housing is so hot and has been making some money, the housing somewhat subsidizes the commercial, right? It's it's like the concept of, we'll let you build all these houses and, you know, do all these things, but you gotta build the commercial. So the idea of the the commercial be being built, I feel like that needed to be done. Irregardless of the vesting of the full ratings. Don't we have teeth to say, you needed to have built this? If we let it expire, it's not just like, oh, well, we lost the vehicle of being able to force them to. How do, they should have been legally required to meet the development agreement, which was build the commercial. So what teeth do we have when that doesn't happen? So let's say we don't make a new development agreement. What teeth do we have to ensure that this gets done, that they meet the development agreement? That was a contract. So I guess what I.
City Attorney Ray, could you please answer that question?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about a development agreement that was entered back in two thousand fifteen. Uh, I've reviewed that development agreement and typically they're predicated on the belief that the project is, has a public benefit from the city's standpoint. And so um, the developer is going to be given some certainty on what rules apply because the city sees public benefits in the project. But most developments, and this one in particular, I don't believe have a process by which looking back at the tail end of the of the process, the city can force the developer to uh, to 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 build commercial. Um, it's more of a, it's supposed to be a symbiotic, kind of a mutually beneficial um arrangement. And and I don't believe that the city has a remedy at this point to require uh, under the current development agreement, the developer to um, to 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 build commercial. And 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 that might be something that we look at in development agreements that we enter moving forward. Um, uh, I don't know that you could have that exact type of provision, but we could talk about teeth, but we're we're talking about an agreement that was um, uh, entered into over ten years ago and uh, uh, just doesn't have those those provisions in it that I'm aware of.
Mayor Pretend, and then I'm gonna ask for the motion to table because this conversation is not gonna go anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, all good. And this is a shorter, a shorter comment than than previously. I I think the one piece and and based on Director Thomas's sort of feedback in terms of the timeline, there is obviously already, um, there there's been a transition in ownership. Uh, I think it was alluded to that this occurred during the pandemic. Uh, several redesigns have been submitted. Um, it also seems like this is um, is obviously the the staff time that went into review and and development. So, uh, you know, there there is some investment, obviously, going forward. If we don't approve this, then the options are, yes, either you build at that rate or you decide the project's not viable and you and you sell the property, in which case we may have to start all over again. So I I just wanted to put that out there. There are two sides to this. I I wasn't super excited about, you know, an indefinite extension and restarting this process again. But we we've made, it seems like we have made some progress and there are some finite timelines that are coming up, which if they are missed, um, and we put this amendment in place, that would essentially shortcut the three-year extension. So um, with that, I just wanted to sort of throw that extra piece out there as the the flip side of this. If we don't approve is, we could also not get the project. So it's sort of the, gotta, uh, I would ask sort of my fellow council members to think about both both sides of that.
You, Mayor Pretend, would someone like to make a motion to table?
I would be to table to that.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Moving to table the motion to the next meeting.
Oh, uh, but.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Um, and with that, uh, we have consensus from council um, on an amendment um, on eighteen months, uh, the building permit is not picked up uh by a date certain that um, the twenty twenty-five fees would apply. Uh, council, as Mayor Pretend pointed out, understands the risk um, there as well of twenty-five-year project potentially not uh coming in as a result as well uh, for a council discussion at the next meeting. And so with that, we have no further business, unless we are, um, our objections, we are adjourned.